Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Because this is a remote meeting, I will ask Ms. Sullivan to please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins?
Present.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Present.
Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Present.
Mr. Meta? Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Present.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neil? Ms. Robinson?
Present.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom. It will be posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. The recording will be available in all of the BPS languages. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee, under the February 7th meeting link. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to offer live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cababeriano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. The Zoom interpretation feature has been activated. Zoom participants should click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I want to remind everyone to please speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. We'll begin with the approval of minutes. I will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the January 24th, 2024, school committee meeting as presented. Is there a motion? So, thank you. There's a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neil? Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The minutes are approved unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report. I present to you our Superintendent Mary Skipper.
Good evening and thank you, Chair. I'd like to start. February is Black History Month. We're honoring the past and present strength, courage, resilience, and brilliance of Black people in our schools, the city of Boston, and all across America. To celebrate, we're hosting a number of events at our schools and administrative offices. Last night, our RCD unit, which is our Recruitment, Cultivation, and Diversity Program Unit, hosted their annual Black History Alana program sponsored by the BU Hardy School of Global Studies. Forty educators came to the BU campus to discuss a new documentary on the African diaspora. There are several upcoming events open to the public that I'd also like to highlight. This Friday, February 9th, at 12:00 p.m., we will welcome the award-winning Boston Arts Academy Spirituals Ensemble, directed by Michael Bradley, to perform Negro spirituals at the Bowling Building. The Office of Opportunity Gaps will host a fireside chat on February 15th, 2024, at 6:30 p.m. via Zoom with Sharif Almiki, CEO of the Center for the Black Educator Development. On February 28th, the OHC recruitment team will host a Black Diaspora Recruitment Fair as we approach hiring season to support our continued effort in increasing our workforce diversity. And on the following day, February 29th, the Office of Opportunity Gaps will host the annual Central Office Black History Month Celebration at the Bowling Building from 10:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m. with special guest speakers and performances. There will also be many different Black history programs held throughout our schools across the district, and we will share some of those highlights later in the months, later in the month as the events happen. A few words about our BPS Sundays program. As Mayor Wu shared in the State of the City, six of our cultural institutions are opening their doors for free to our BPS students with up to three guests on the first and second Sunday of each month. These institutions include Boston Children's Museum, the Institute of Contemporary Art, the Museum of Fine Arts, the Museum of Science, the New England Aquarium, and the Franklin Park Zoo. To gain entry, families need their student's name, their school name, and their student's BPS ID number. Families will receive personalized emails with all of that information each week through their email addresses, and these are the email addresses that we have listed in Aspen. That email also includes the directions, the hours, and pre-registration information for each institution. Pre-registration is not required, but it's recommended. This past weekend was the first BPS Sunday, and 1,846 students and their guests attended. We expect that number to grow in the weeks ahead. Many students and families reported that it was their first time visiting the cultural institutions. For example, 43% of the BPS visitors that went to the Children's Museum last Sunday reported that it was their first time visiting. This is, of course, a pilot program, and we're hopeful that the program will expand beyond August and that more cultural institutions will join. As Chair Robinson likes to remind us, these are all our children. Every person and institution in this city has a role to play in helping our students succeed. I want to thank all of the institutions who have signed on. I have no doubt that countless benefits will happen for students who attend as they're inspired in new ways, or they learn something new that they never would have if they hadn't, if it wasn't for this partnership. It's truly a life-changing experience for so many of our students and families. And a special thanks to Chair Robinson, who will never say it publicly, but she has been quietly pushing this behind the scenes for years, and to our mayor for finally making it happen. This past weekend, we opened the Bowling Building and welcomed 33 families who are new to the country and living in the temporary shelter at Melanie Cass Recreation Center. We're thrilled to welcome these families and their 47 students to the BPS community. We know their journeys have been long and hard, and it's our hope that over the coming days and weeks, they feel cared for and connected to our community. I also want to thank the Welcome Service Team, led by Chief of Family Advancement, Magali Sanchez, and Director Sonia Gomes. The team set up the registration process in really just a few days, and this included backpacks with school supplies for all the students and books, games and activities for students while we helped their families register for school. They also coordinated a clothing drive so students would have clothes for the first day of school. Amazing work by our Welcome Services team. Because of their efforts, the students were very excited for their first day, which was today. We organized a welcoming, a walking school bus this morning to help families understand how they can get to school. School communities were ready to receive their new students, and we are happy to help our families into a new routine as quickly as possible. Welcome Services will host another registration session for families this week, and we expect some 30 to 40 additional students. There's still a need for more clothing for the students and their families, so we're working with our city and state partners to organize donations for the families. We'll share more details on that soon. I want to thank Katie's Closet for immediately stepping up to help our students, as they do so many different times during the year at our Katie Closets throughout the district. We'll continue to all that we can to support our new students and families. On Saturday, we held our first community workshop diving into the Long-Term Facilities Plan. Over 40 people attended, plus staff from each BPS division. We're grateful to our partners of the Boston Public Library for hosting us. Educators, parents, students, and other partners explored public neighborhood and school-level data. Participants discussed our shared challenges and opportunities when it comes to the state of our buildings. And our goal to expand access to high-quality student experience was the center of conversation. The team heard feedback about the neighborhood assets and opportunities that the district must take into account in this process. The next workshop will happen this Monday, February 12th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Bowling Building on the second floor. Our focus for that workshop is high schools. I especially encourage our high school students and educators to join this interactive workshop on Monday if you can. We really, we need your collaboration to make it work. And you can register for the high school workshop at future community workshops at the boston.gov forward slash small case gnd-bps. At each of these workshops, childcare, refreshments, and interpretation services are always available. A few bright spots. We're incredibly proud of our Boston Latin School student, Parker Vincent Alva, who was recently named Boston's Third Youth Poet Laureate. Mayor Wu celebrated Parker in a ceremony at the Roxbury Branch of the Boston Public Library. As the city's Youth Poet Laureate, he will publish his own book of poetry that will eventually be available at all of the BPL locations. Last week, students from the Harvard Kent and the Warren Prescott Schools had the exciting opportunity to participate in a live talkback with NASA astronaut Laurel O'Hara. Laurel was aboard the International Space Station, and the students were able to ask her questions about her time in space. After the event, the schools held a science fair where students were able to learn and explore more about our solar system. Longtime East Boston High School swimming coach Dave Aronella retired after 48 years with the district. He's the longest-serving coach in BPS history. We thank Coach Aronella for his service, for impacting thousands of students for the better in his 48 years, and we wish him a happy, healthy, and well-deserved retirement. And finally, I had the opportunity to visit two of our schools with Vice Chair O'Neil last week. We visited the JFK and the Manning School in Jamaica Plain. It was really great to see the students, the staff, all learning and engaging, and we even took a trip down memory lane. We saw the second grade class where Vice Chair O'Neil attended. I really hope to do more visits with other members. There's really nothing better than being in our schools, seeing our kids, and seeing all of the learning and growing that's happening. With that, Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'll now open it up for questions and comments from the committee. Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Superintendent, for your updates today. I honestly just wanted to take the opportunity of giving Rashawn Martin a shout-out from the Alana team. Due to my other job, I had the opportunity of seeing a collaboration between his office and duet of bringing all of our Alana staff. Thirty-five participated. After five, I couldn't believe that there were some teachers that left work, left their after-school program, to come together to network, to learn an opportunity for professional or educational development. So just wanted to give Rashawn a shout-out and really for the district to look into these type of departments, these type of programmings that can help us really retain our Black and Brown staff in the district. And I was able to see a little bit of that that day, so just wanted to chime in and give that team a particular shout-out. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Gracias, Superintendent, por el reporte. Quiero compartir con ustedes que yo estuve el domingo, el primer día, en el museo de arte fino, donde estuvo la alcaldesa haciendo la presentación.
Thank you very much, Madam Superintendent. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'd like to share with you that actually, as a matter of fact, I was here on Sunday at the Museum of Fine Arts, where Major Wu had the opportunity to give her presentation. I wanted to share this information with you.
Y tuve la oportunidad. Esto fue, esto es realmente maravilloso que nuestros estudiantes puedan tener acceso a esto. Tuve la oportunidad de compartir con familias y estudiantes que me decían, es la primera vez que puedo tener acceso a ver un museo, y estaban tan emocionados que para mí me enchinó la piel de ver estos niños y esta familia tan contenta de poder tener este acceso.
So, all the families, it was actually a wonderful experience to be able to see how the students were able to access the museum itself, the families and the students. They were all very excited. As a matter of fact, they mentioned that for some of them was the first time they'd been present to such a museum that actually produced some skin bumps in me. It was very exciting.
Estas son iniciativas, pilotos que debemos empujar a que sigan realmente realizándose porque hace mucha falta.
So, these are critical events. These initiatives and pilot programs are events that we have to promote because we need those.
Quiero también decirle a la escuela, estuve visitando la escuela Tobin en esta semana, y quiero dar las gracias a los líderes escolares de la escuela y el cuerpo de maestro por su hospitalidad, por lo bien que me trataron, y por su recorrido en las instalaciones de la escuela.
I had the opportunity as well to visit the Tobin School. I wanted to mention that. I had the opportunity to talk to the leaders and all the teachers there. It was very grateful to see all their hospitality, and actually, they brought me to walk through the school. I'm very appreciative of this.
También ver los estudiantes como los estudiantes, que es una escuela que tiene más de 500 estudiantes aproximadamente, y es una escuela que también tiene muchas necesidades dentro de su estructura, la cual he enviado ya a Superintendent. Y quiero decirle a las maestras que sé que muchas de ellas me dijeron que han estado esperando mucho tiempo para reparaciones dentro de la escuela.
I have to mention as well that I had the opportunity to look at this school where there are actually more than 500 students. I had the opportunity to look at the needs, the infrastructure itself, that at some point I did share with you, or I'm going to share this information with you, Madam Superintendent. This is something that the teachers themselves have been communicating, the long-term needs regarding the repairs or the infrastructure needs that are currently existing in the school.
Y en ese sentido va mi pregunta para la superintendente. Escuelas como la Tobin, y sé que hay otras más, y aplaudo esta esto de que podamos nosotros, o por lo menos yo puedo hablar por mí como miembro del comité escolar, voy a estar visitando las escuelas semana tras semana diferentes. Esta escuela voy a estar visitando porque pienso que de la única manera que sabes lo que está pasando en la escuela es estando dentro de la escuela, es compartiendo con los maestros, es compartiendo la realidad que están viviendo.
That is very critical as well. I have to share this information as well with Madam Superintendent. It is something, it is an initiative. I do applaud myself. I congratulate this. As a matter of fact, myself, I will be visiting different schools. There is no better way to learn about the intricacies and the needs of the schools than being present there to be able to talk to the teachers, and that is something that I intend in doing.
Entonces, ahí va mi pregunta, tomando en cuenta de que hay varias, por ejemplo, voy a tomar de ejemplo la escuela Tobin donde necesita reparaciones urgentes dentro de su estructura, y sé que hay otras escuelas que tienen también las mismas situaciones, baño, ventilación, este techos deteriorados. ¿Qué es el plan para estas escuelas en lo inmediato? Porque sabemos que estas necesidades se pueden no resolver de inmediato, pero sí apalear. Si pudiéramos nosotros pensar en una limpieza profunda, en mandar a reparar esos techos, ¿qué es el plan que ellos han pensado, qué es el OD que pueden decirnos para estas escuelas?
So, the question is, Superintendent, is what is the plan that we have in place? I'm going to use the Tobin School as an example. Where there are many needs as well. If we talk about the schools themselves, the infrastructure, there are many repairs that are urgently needed. We talk about the bathrooms. We talk about the ventilation systems. We talk about the ceilings that are deteriorating, that need an immediate solution. So, my question is, it is very difficult to resolve everything in the short term, but what is the plan? Perhaps a deep cleaning, some repairs that could be done. So, given the Tobin as an example, what is the plan that we have in place to resolve the immediate needs regarding the infrastructure of the school themselves? As an example, the Tobin School.
Great. So, thank you, Ms. Polanco Garcia, for the question. So, it's interesting because the next, one of the next things school committee will do is they will hear about the MSBA accelerated repair. This is a program that allows us to be able to look at our facilities condition assessment for the first time and really prioritize schools relative to big projects. These are projects that need planning for, that have to do with the roofs and the windows and the doors, really leakage kinds of issues, some of which...
Excuse me, Superintendent. I can't hear you. The interpreter in Spanish. Sorry.
Okay. I'm in the channel.
I'm in a Spanish channel now, but I can't hear you respond. You answer.
Okay. It says I'm in the English channel.
Now, yes.
Can you hear me? Okay, great. So, I was saying thank you for the question, and it's timely because tonight, the MSBA will come before you, that we will present from facilities. And this is one example of a repair program that we use relative to big projects. And so those can be like entire roofs, those can be windows, doors, really big projects that can cause a lot of deterioration in the school and are expensive. And so we'll be bringing a number of buildings before you. But I think that the facilities condition assessment highlights the need, like the deep need that you see when you go out to our schools and we see. And, you know, in our budget, we have a certain amount of repair and maintenance. But this is why we feel we have to really look region by region at the schools and rather than spread the dollars across many, we have to start really concentrating on making some buildings the way they should be. We've been trying to stretch money across all the buildings, and because the buildings are so old, you can only get to a fraction of things each year in terms of the cost. And those maintenance costs continue to go up and up, which is something we'll talk about in the budget. So, right now, schools log into our asset management what the issues are, and then the team looks through, and anything that's health or emergency, they will dispatch and go out and fix. And things that require planning or summer work, those kinds of work, they will communicate with the school leader about what timeline those repairs are on. So, anything you send, my office will make sure that facilities gets a copy of that for the Tobin.
I appreciate that part you say because the teacher say me, "Raf, I waiting for long time. I waiting for many, many, many year for that situation." I think it's important pay attention because is the kid, is the teacher. The teacher is like so frustrated for that situation because, "Raf, a long time I waiting for reparations." So, thank you for that. Just like, right now, I think my time is done. I'm finally my time. But I have the second question about the transportation. If you the resident, second round or right now, it's possible? I don't know.
Why don't you ask it right now?
Okay. Thank you so much. Then, my question is about the transportation issues. I have a lot of concern, the parents about the transportation. The bus no stay in the stop in time. The attendance in the school, some parent contact to me because when the school pass lease in attendance, if you the bus coming late, the kid when pass the lease is absent or absent no...
Llega tardío, o llega tardío, y le están reportando como llegada tardía. Es lo que quiero decir.
What I'm trying to say is that the kids, because of this, the school buses not being on time of the stops, it causes the students to be late, not on their fault, of course. So, what is happening is actually that the schools are reporting that the students are late or is considered as a tardy, not being their fault. And that is a concern that the parents have been sharing with me. Contact me, contact me directly.
Sure.
Yes. I have some parent provide me letter, especial letter. The school provide letter to say, "Your child have six absent. If you, you continue absent, your child, you go to, do you have problem?" You know? So, the mother say, "I'm frustrated because my son never, never is absent."
Nunca está ausente en la escuela. Y entonces esta madre me dice, "Estoy preocupada porque mi hijo nunca ha faltado." Ahora el bus está llegando tarde todos los días, y está provoc... Bueno, Juan.
So, we have to consider that it is the bus that is being tardy, it's not the students that are being tardy. So, the mothers have been sharing with this frustration. It says, "It's not my student that is being absent. It's actually the school that is being late." And some of the letters say actually that there is multiple absences, up to six absences, which could be problematic if the absences continue, not be the fault of the students themselves, but the schools being, the buses being tardy.
Incluso hay una madre que está casi a punto de perder su empleo porque el bus está supuesto que pase a una hora determinada, y ella tiene que quedar esperando el bus, y créame, una mamá soltera esperando un bus para después llegar tarde al trabajo, se le está complicando mucho la vida. Por eso me gustaría una actualización qué está pasando con la transportación.
If I'd like to know exactly what is happening with the transportation itself. As a matter of fact, I can name a mother herself that she's about to lose her job. She's about to become unemployed because school is, the bus is tardy, she is starting to work. And then what, how are we going to resolve this? I would like an update on this. And someone is about to lose the employment, and those are real stories.
Sure. So, thank you, thank you, Member Polanco Garcia. So, I think two parts. One, if a student is late because of the bus, we record that differently in the system. We record it as due to transportation, and we recognize that's not the fault of the student. So, it could be that the school might need some help with that. So, if you let me know what that school is and email me, we will reach out and help that school. I think the second part about making sure that the bus is on time, transportation looks through to see if any buses are regularly late. And if those buses are regularly late, they work with the, with transportation, Transdev, our vendor, and the bus drivers to figure out why the bus might be late. It could be there's the route in construction, it could be new drivers... It could be there's the route in construction, it could be new drivers on the route, but if we see a pattern, we generally address it pretty quickly. If I, if you can send me that particular situation, uh, I am sure that the transportation department will look into that and, and resolve it. Um, the other thing is parents can always call into the transportation helpline and record that they're having trouble with a particular bus and then we'll get the information that way as well. Either way, we'll help.
Superintendent, can I add one more thing?
Sure.
Thank, thank you for that question, Ms. Polanco Garcia. Um, I agree with everything the superintendent said. The only other thing I, I want to add is one of our, our big focuses right now is, you know, we're in the middle of implementing new technology that will do a number of things, but one of the really important things is helping us better monitor and understand student ridership. Because we know that many students who are assigned to buses right now don't ride the bus regularly. And that, you know, those drivers going to those stops day after day is results in increased delays that negatively impact those students that you're talking about that do rely on the bus. And so this is a really big focus for us and I think is one area that is key to kind of, you know, we've made, we've continued to make incremental gains, but to really get where we need to be, this is one of the the key problems that we're really focused on.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, Dr. Alkins?
Uh, thank you for the report. Um, and so, um, actually these questions are probably separate from the, the report, but um, one, I mean, I know we're, we're in February, but, um, I know there's a lot of thought around the communication and, um, looking forward to summer programming and just where are we with preparing um, families for that and letting them know, um, about options that will be available. Um, and then my second question is more or less, um, calling for just, just an update on where we are with uh, conversations, particularly with, um, like the Shaw and Taylor communities that we decided to, you know, merge and just sort of where we are with preparations for the process. Uh, so, um, if I could, you know, in an update there.
Uh, sure. So, um, I, I think on the summer programming, the team's been actively meeting, uh, planning the programming out. Uh, the intent is to mid, mid-March to be able to get some of that initial information out to families. That's a little bit earlier than we normally do and we've been trying to get it early and early each year. Uh, so we're looking forward to the summer, putting a lot of effort into it and, um, really feel like we use the data from last year to see which programs students were best responding to, uh, signing up for, had the best attendance, uh, and then going deeper with those programs. I think additionally, we're also, you know, we had a very good, um, enrollment in special education last year. We're trying to deepen, uh, those that get extended school year to give them more options within the fifth quarter. So there's a couple of really positive things that are happening there. Uh, we'll make sure for the next few schools, uh, next few uh, superintendent reports that we add in something on that. Um, and then, uh, Chief Danislos, do you want to give a very brief update on Shaw Taylor?
Uh, thanks Superintendent. Um, thanks Superintendent. Um, we're currently in the implementation phase, um, of the merger for the Shaw Taylor. Um, right now we're working, so we have, um, weekly engagement meetings with both the Shaw Taylor community. Um, so we're working on joint engagement. Um, the capital planning team is leading that work with the community and then there's another bucket where we're working on some of the academics pieces on how we're doing the, um, implementation of the merger and that's ongoing with the school superintendent. Um, and the capital planning team. Um, so yeah, so we're, um, we're chugging along with the implementation and meet weekly with both, uh, school communities and, um, we have consistent community meetings with the broader Shaw Taylor community and different working groups.
Yes, and so, and my question wasn't just limited to the Shaw Taylor community, but like of all of the, like the communities as we're especially just making sure that we're monitoring this process and that we're getting updates as regularly as possible, um, and that these communities are supported. So.
Yep, I think that, um, uh, that's heard and I think, um, we can, um, def- definitely share updates with school commi-, uh, the school committee on pro, under, uh, mergers that are, um, currently in the implementation stage. And as we're moving forward with other, um, projects that we're sharing, um, updates as we're making announcements and moving into implementation.
Thank you. Mr. Corder Hernandez?
Yes, thank you so much for the report. Um, I appreciate Dr. Alkins' question about summer programming too. I'm sure you know Superintendent, my son, uh, you know, so many families are already registered for summer programming for next year, just from private sources, just because the applications go up in January or the first week of February and they close so soon. So I do hope this is something we can keep thinking about, how do we match the timeline with external providers so families can have the most information when they're making decisions. Um, separately, I'm just wondering if we have an update on the mid-year report that we had last session. We asked for, I specifically asked for some data around outputs and just wondering if that is either is coming back to us as an agenda item or we'll talk about some of those outputs or just sort of what the vision is there?
I believe we have a memo coming to you that has explicitly around the academic outputs.
Great. And is there a timeline for that or?
Uh, I, I'll check with the team and we'll get back during the, further in the meeting. I know they were working on it actively.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to say, um, thank you about the museum Sundays. Um, this is something that I have been personally pushing for since, uh, Mayor Manino's administration. Uh, you know, we, we talked so much about closing the opportunity gap and the issue of the cultural organizations in the city are none to pass around the world and so many people come to take part in it that I really always wanted it to be available free of charge to the children of the city so that they can take part in this. And I'm really, it's really wonderful to hear that so many folks, um, took part this past Sunday for the first time. And, um, I, I wanted to, I was visiting the, um, Murphy's School on Friday, talking to second graders, gave them the challenge to see if they could get their families to get them to each of the different museums. Um, by the time this was over in August, it was very poignant to hear one little boy who was so excited about the opportunity to go to the aquarium. He said, you know, I've been down to the waterfront with my family and we were outside of the aquarium, but it was too expensive for us to go in. And I always wanted to see what was on the inside. So I am hoping that he and his family and so many others will actually have that opportunity to go inside and feel welcomed and to see, you know, all the riches that our, um, city has to offer. Um, also this week I was able to, um, attend the Murphy's Lunar New Year celebration, um, and was delighted to see all of the dancers, um, and sit in on some of the classrooms of some of our kids, you know, talking about what they were learning about Vietnam and those who are second and third generation Vietnamese but have never been to Vietnam and what their hopes and dreams are. And so I want to thank the Murphy for a wonderful visit, um, for a wonderful program and, um, look forward to seeing them, you know, again soon. And I want to thank our members because one of the, um, the asks I've made of members this year is that we all try to get out and visit as many of our schools as possible. Um, thank you, um, to, um, Ms. Polanco Garcia and others who've already started that because given the year that we are facing around understanding facilities, the best way we can all really understand what we are struggling with is by getting out and understanding and seeing, you know, what needs to be done and understanding, you know, how much our facilities folks are working every day to keep up with our aging crumbling buildings, but to critically understand why this work with the, um, the Green New Deal is so important for us, um, to do. So again, thank you all for that. Um, Mr. O'Neill?
Madam Chair, I'll, um, just very quickly say I thank you for your encouragement to all of us to visit schools because that, you know, as the members are saying, that's how you learn. I have had, uh, the experience the past two months of visiting schools one-on-one with the superintendent. And for those of you, you can imagine that the superintendent is out in our schools all the time, but if you work through her office, it's a unique experience to visit the schools one-on-one with the superintendent. Among other things, our school superintendent is a highly, highly, highly experienced educator. And to be able to talk with her in the classroom on what's going on and really dig in on our literacy efforts and our math efforts and our special needs efforts and our ELL programs. One-on-one, it's a, it's a unique learning experience. So I encourage folks to not only visit schools, but to do it with the superintendent. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And Vice Chair, I must say I learned quite a bit about our visiting planning. And you're having attended there and you knew history that I didn't know of that school. So it was, it was a, it was a wonderful exchange.
Well, since we're talking of specific mentions, I, I also want to shout out the folks at the JFK School also in Jamaica Plain. What a joy. And my first time visiting that school, which I can't believe I said that. What a joyous school, what a joyous school community. And you see learning going on in every single classroom. It was clean, it was bright, it was energetic. School leader, uh, Dr. Copeland, right?
Yep, Copeland, yep.
Just, just a joyous visit. It was such a delight to be in that school.
And before I close out, I want to say thank you to the Curly School. I had a wonderful afternoon with them yesterday and they gave me a curly cup that I told them I would use tonight on school committee. So thank you for your color-changing cup. And if there's, thank you. And if there's no objection, we'll close out this discussion. I'll now entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Credad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Thank you. The superintendent's report is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Before we move on to public comment, we have a brief presentation of the Massachusetts School Building Authority Accelerated Repair Program Statement of Interest, which the committee will be voting on later this evening. Due to the timing of the MSBA's approval schedule, which includes a vote by the city council, this matter is being presented to the committee this evening as both a presentation and a vote. Committee members first received this information in the form of a memo back on January twenty ninth. I'll now turn it over to our superintendent for opening remarks.
Great, thank you Chair. Um, so as you know, and I think as, uh, our school committee members have testified as well, right? We, our facilities need major work. Um, and we have to really utilize every resource we can to update our schools and to be able to address the issues. One of those critical resources is the Massachusetts School Building Authority, which we call MSBA. Uh, this is a state authority that oversees capital projects, uh, in throughout the state. Uh, there's two primary funding programs with MSBA. There's the core program, uh, which is intended predominantly for new school construction and then the accelerated repair program, ARP, where districts can submit specific projects intended to support repairs to school facilities that, that range like roofs, windows, doors and boilers. Those are the three big categories. Um, tonight we'll be focusing on the ARP submission. We'll come back to school committee, uh, with a core submission for the spring. This year we used the facilities condition assessment, as I said earlier, to help us understand which schools were in the greatest need. And, um, I would just, you know, we're, we would ask for your vote in favor of these projects. Our statement of interest is due to the MSBA by March first, uh, relative to the, to, um, to the projects. And there's other rounds of approvals required by the state and including a city council vote. Uh, so with that, I will now turn it over to interim chief of operations, Teresa Neff Webster, to share more specifically about the projects.
Thank you Superintendent Skipper and good evening members of the school committee and thank you for having me to talk about the ARP projects. Um, as superintendent mentioned, the MSBA, uh, uh, projects are in for submission for March, uh, first. And so as part of our process, uh, we have gone through a prior, prioritization process that I'm going to walk us through and talk about our final, um, eight schools that we have landed on for submission. I just wanted to name that in regards to the submission, this is a specifically different year for MSBA as they have taken boilers off of the application process, as they, they are reviewing how to best approach funding fossil fuel-free boilers moving forward. So for this, uh, particular year, we are only allowed to submit for our windows and our roofs. So, um, the criteria for MSBA for the roofs is that they need to be twenty-five years or older and the windows need to be thirty years or older and in a state of failed conditions. So as the superintendent mentioned, we were able to use a prioritization based on the data gathered regarding the asset conditions of these specific categories from our facilities condition assessment work earlier this year. Uh, also our partners in public facilities department have confirmed that any window submissions will include external door replacement as well. So all of the projects that have windows being replaced will also have their doors replaced. Once we used our facilities condition, uh, data, we went through an internal process to review the prioritized list through our facilities department, our planning and analysis team, our capital planning partners, uh, deputy superintendent Depina reviewed as well as senior, uh, advisors of the superintendent and finally the superintendent herself. So we've landed on six schools for, uh, window replacement and two schools for roof replacement for our submissions this year. Uh, you'll see that the two roof replacements are aged in years twenty-five and twenty-six and both are in failing condition. And a failing condition means that they received a score from zero to six percent in the analysis. Both of the roofs, uh, being, uh, put for submission scored at a zero for their asset condition. Of the six schools listed for window repair, uh, replacement, eh, eh, we have uh, ages of between thirty-one and thirty-five years old with all failing conditions. All of the asset scores from these six schools range from zero to zero point one in, um, their condition assessment. So hopefully we provided context, uh, around how we decided upon these eight schools uh, and where we landed, uh, for their submissions. And I'm happy, uh, to pass it back to the chair for any questions that may arise.
Thank you. I'll now open it up to members for any questions or comments. Dr. Alkins?
Um, just a couple of questions. So for the six schools that have, that you're, were replacing windows and exterior doors, are those also the schools that have, have the oldest? I guess like what's the, the oldest that we've seen in, in our district?
They are, yes, they, the ranges, what are the ages first and then based on age, the asset conditions, um, ages of our spaces and we, we pulled the top twenty from the facilities condition.
You keep freezing.
Uh, maybe Deputy Depina can jump in there?
Yeah, can you?
Happy to jump in everyone. Good, good evening, uh, comes the school committee and the public joining us this evening. Uh, what's recent, uh, Neff Webster was going was that we ranked the initial twenty, uh, schools in each of the categories and did a full assessment with our teams to look at both the age and the condition as well as, uh, different dynamics of programmings that are going on in the schools as well. So through that review and analysis, we landed on the tops, um, these top, uh, few schools in each category and, uh, decided for this, uh, this, for the submissions.
Yeah, I think what I'm asking is, is like, wh- what's the oldest that you saw on the list? Or are you saying that these are?
These are, these are them, yeah.
Oh.
Sorry, I'm having internet issues. I apologize.
Yeah, so I was thinking what you presenting is the intersection of all those factors, but I was specifically asking about like the age. Cool, I understand that. Um, and then second, Cool, I understand that. And then second, I also sort of read that now the process is switching to be by annual in terms of proposals. So just my understanding is then we'll, we won't be able to do this until, what, 2027 again, or?
So it's actually, it's a great question. Thank you. It's actually starting in 2025. So we'll be able to submit again next year and then after 2025, it'll be by annual.
Okay, alright.
I'm sorry, the only thing I would add, they did pause last year's submittals for this opportunity to just recalibrate, look at their funding sources a little bit differently. So this is our first time providing a submission in about two years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Yeah, just a question around some of the thinking here. And I, this will come up, I think, as without a broader master facilities plan. But like the, for example, the, there are schools on there that might be single-strand schools. Like it looks like the O'Donnell is a single-strand school, but it's up for a new roof. And then at the same time, we're having conversations where that doesn't, those types of schools don't fit into the model that we're moving forward with. So I guess like, how are we making sense of that, right? Like where are the investments going in alignment to the types of schools we're planning to have? Does it make sense what I'm asking around sort of investment priorities? I, I respect the investment priority around age. And then at the same time, I'm just curious how it fits into a broader vision around a plan that we don't fully have, but that I suspect is like in discussion that, you know, at a table that I'm not at.
Sure. So Teresa, I don't know if you have internet issues or not, so I'll jump in here. So in this analysis and review, we also consulted and are in lockstep communication with our chief of capital planning, Dell Stanislawz, as well as our panda team, and as we're in, as well as academic side of the house with our inclusion planning work that we're rolling out. So these decisions were not made just in a vacuum, just the operation side of the house. We looked at all the different programmings about where we're going, both in short and long term. And the short answer is that as long as we're using these buildings for educational purposes, which we, which we feel we may, those builders will still be a good asset for us to use regardless of what programs are in there, but they will be educational programs happening.
But I guess just a question, like long-term planning, just strategically, how long does it take for a project like this to get picked up? Like if they say yes, God willing, then how long does till start to completion?
Yeah, they'll release the funds to us and then we start planning right away. So the specific timeline for project is developed with the MSBA and our facilities team and our PFD. So for example, if we have to do windows and doors, that timeline will be.
Sam, please slow down a bit.
Sorry. That scope of work will be determined with the projects teams with MSBA. So once it's approved, we have to map out the schedule based on the need of the, the length and the type of project.
The only thing I would add is traditionally, it's between two to three years, between approval to project completion.
Including like a new roof. It's, I'm, maybe that's the conversation, but just like as a committee member, we're getting a piece of information that's like, we have to move away from single-strand schools. And then, and that, if that news is coming, sort of like, hold tight, we're going to have announcements around the sort of change in building utilization. And then at the same time, are we like investing in the right places, given what we're being told is the, the new direction of the system around the, the buildings that we will be using to house schools in a time of closure? And this may be, you know, outside of both of your domains. I'm not sure. Yeah, Superintendent?
So it's a great question, and here's, here's how I would respond. We've never said that all single-strand schools wouldn't be used in our playbook. And I think by consulting with capital planning, some of the single strands are in areas where we're predicting with enrollment, like they don't have enough buildings, right? They don't have enough space. So East Boston is a great example of that. What we have said is that single-strand buildings could be used as part of a solution. So you might have a couple of single-strand buildings that you then use to create double strands for particular grade levels. That was sort of factored in here. But you're right that this is one of the nuances that as we think about this long-term facilities plan, we have to consider. The good news is, I think in this case, these are all pretty clear-cut. But going forward, absent kind of that long-term plan, where we're actually kind of spelling things out, it would get more complex. But I do think in these, that has been considered.
Happy. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And thank you to Teresa, to Sam, to Dell, to everyone on the team.
Thank you. Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. And report. I need you to understand exactly what happened. Why is all these schools? I ask you that because too many schools needed attention, right? Entonces, a mi me gustaria ver el reporte de como se hizo el proceso que podamos tener un reporte. Cuantas escuelas fueron y qué condiciones se encontraron en esas escuelas?
Culpa, Rafa, tenía problema con el audio. ¿Puedo repetir otra vez?
Okay. Yo voy a repeat again because my interpreter have the trouble with the audio.
I tried with the audio. She will repeat what she was saying. Adelante, Rafa.
Sé que están diciendo que están tomando en cuenta la antigüedad de la escuela, que están tomando en cuenta las condiciones, pero mi primera pregunta, ¿por qué solo seis? Si tenemos en Boston tantas escuelas que necesitan atención inmediata, porque solo pensamos en reparar y prestar la atención a seis. Que me pueden decir, dar un poco más de claridad para poder entender por qué.
I would like to help to get a little more clarity. We're talking about how the schools are, for how long the schools have been functioning. There's some priorities assigned depending on how the school, how well the school is. However, it sounds that you are prioritizing only six of the schools. Why only six schools? That is, there are many schools that actually need immediate attention. If you can provide that clarity, why are you concentrating or focusing on only six schools and not a larger number?
So I'm happy to start. Dr. Pina, if you want to chime in. Essentially, we are limited in the amount of schools that we can put forward to the MSBA for these sorts of projects. Traditionally, we only have put in submissions for up to four. This particular year, we've been advised to put in for more, so we're putting in for the eight total. But there is a limitation to how many applications we can actually put forth to the MSBA and then have them for consideration. But Dr. Pina, do you want to give a little bit more context?
Yes, the only thing I would add to that is that we also have to consider our team's capacity as well as the Public Facilities Department's capacity to actually perform the work. So we could only do what's in the capacity of our department as well as the Public Facilities Department. So as much as we want to submit 20 applications and do 50 projects at a time, we have to be realistic on the capacity of the people we have to actually perform the work to get it done, you know, on a timely manner.
Yeah. Member Polanco Garcia, it's also, this will not be the only roof repairs we do, but these are complete. So this is like a complete roof or complete windows and doors. The maintenance, like our maintenance budget allows us and capital budget allows us to do a number of projects over the summer. It may not be a whole roof. It may be a portion of a roof. It may not be all windows. It may be a side of the building. Those are internal projects that we work on as, as part of our capital and part of our maintenance and bid out. But these projects are kind of the, the biggest extent of what's needed for those buildings. And there is a max of sort of what they will fund.
It's just for some historical context, since 2015, we've completed 35 ARP projects in collaboration with the city. And we have a great track record of working with our city colleagues to implement and get this, get these funds and implement the project and actually complete them. So we have a good track record of this work.
Okay, I see again, Mr. Cardad Hernandez's hand and also Dr. Alkins now. Okay, Dr. Alkins, do you have another question?
Uh, yeah, just, I mean, I guess in the, in the spirit of seeing where we are. So, so currently, the, what Carter and Josiah Quincy are currently under like construction now. Are there a estimated timetable for the completion of those projects? Or have there been delays there that?
No, the Quincy Upper is, should be able to come online at the end of the summer. And the Carter is on schedule to come out in the fall of '25.
My only question is, if we're submitting eight, does the, will that mean that if they accept it, they will fund all eight? Will they pick and choose? I mean, how does it go? What would be the next step? After our submission of eight, what can come back or not happen?
Thank you for the question. So what will happen after we submit is that they will review our submission for completeness and they will do site studies to verify what is in our application. If they have any concerns or findings, they may remove the SOI from their process. Otherwise, it'll go forward for the board to review. The board will then decide by, based on their funding, whether they will actually be able to fund all eight of our projects. And then they'll make a final vote this, late this summer, early this fall on which of the eight or all eight, hopefully, that they will fund for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the committee looks forward to taking action on this proposal later this evening. We'll now move on to general public comment. As I announced at our last meeting during this first hour of public comment, all topics will have a limit of 10 minutes. That's five people to ensure that a range of topics have an opportunity be heard earlier in the meeting. Those that do not have a chance, an opportunity to speak during the first hour will have the option of speaking at the end of the meeting or submitting written or video testimony. This approach will provide a balance to allow for a range of diverse voices. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, caregivers, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. As the chair said, this meeting will feature two public comment periods, with the first period limited to one hour. After one hour, anyone who has not testified will have the opportunity to do so at the end of the meeting. We have 32 speakers this evening. Each person will have two minutes to speak, and I'll remind you when you have 30 seconds remaining. If your remarks are longer than two minutes, please email your comments for distribution to the committee. The time that an interpreter uses for English interpretation will not be deducted from a speaker's allotted time. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. Please state your name, affiliation, and what neighborhood you're from before you begin. We'll begin this evening with Michael Heishman, followed by Katie Kuntugno Collarin, Anne Chinchilla de George, Tracy Koots, and Narida Tejeda. If you can, please raise your hands virtually. Mike Heishman?
Mike Heishman, Beja Dorchester. Since our mayor and superintendent took office, the Woo Skipper Plan for the O'Brien is the only one that has not gone through the usual school building process and the only one that has their names embracing this project. Hooray for the O'Brien community for their resistance against this racist plan. While being promised a new and wonderful facility, they have been, they have refused to be bought off. Instead, they have taken a strong and principled stand in support of justice and equity. The BPS strategic vision begins with, quote, "At BPS, every child in every classroom is entitled to an equitable, world-class, high-quality education." Close quote. Tonight is the official beginning of the process of creating a budget for the next fiscal year. Will this budget move us boldly in support of our vision? Almost every year, the superintendent and the school committee thank the mayor for her or his generous increase in the budget and ends up ratifying a budget that tolerates abusive and neglectful conditions. Will you do this again this year? Instead of steamrolling over community opposition and closing schools, you should come up with an authentic facilities plan. This budget should make major investments in expanding successful programs like community schools and ethnic studies. You should defund, you should defund the policing of our schools and instead make major increases in restorative justice. Stop inclusion done cheaply and instead fully fund inclusion done right. Invest in programs so that our children will graduate with both a high level of fluency in English and a high level of fluency in another language. Embrace your strategic vision and boldly move forward so that every child in every classroom will very soon achieve an equitable world-class.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Katie Kuntugno Collarin.
Good evening, Superintendent Skipper and school committee members. My name is Katie Kuntugno Collarin, and I am the chair of the School Parent Council at the James F. Condon K-8 School in South Boston. The Condon is South Boston's largest and most diverse elementary school. 81% of our students are high-needs, 69% of our students are from low-income families. We are also, according to David Bloom in the BPS CFO's office, the school that is going to be experiencing some of the most drastic budget cuts in the entire district for the 2024 or '25 school year. We have a new principal and an active parent council this year, and together, we're working to turn the Condon.
Excuse me, please slow down a bit.
Oh, sure, sorry.
Thank you.
We have a new principal and an active parent council this year. And together, we're working to turn the Condon into the excellent school all our students deserve. However, currently, there are five positions vital to the functioning of the Condon, positions like an assistant principal, a second secretary in an office that serves 600 students, and staff assistant able to stay beyond contractual hours in the event that buses are running late that are not in our budget. Our concern is that these cuts will undermine the progress we are trying so hard to make at the Condon by limiting the basic functionality and safety of our building. My daughter is in K-1 at Condon. Her name is Annie and she is four. She loves her teachers and her classmates and is so proud to be a Condon Husky. And I feel strongly that the school is capable of making strides to become a viable and desirable option for more families in South Boston and throughout the city. We are committed not just to improvement, but to excellence. I'm asking the district to please support us in that mission and not to give up on some of our city's most vulnerable students. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anne Chinchilla de George.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Anne. I'm a resident of Roxbury and a parent at Boston Latin Academy. I'm really just, I'm, I'm going to be asking over and over again, when are we going to start following the process and protocols of your own, of BPS? Parents cannot depend on anything to resolve issues because nothing is followed. And when you finally get to a person who should own the answer, they don't. They'll tell you, they'll call you back and never respond, or again, hand it off to somebody else. It's endless. This is an incredible hamster wheel that we are just running on constantly and we're not getting any answers. It's, it doesn't make sense to me that the Joint Steering Committee hasn't gotten back to me. This is the superintendent and the head of the BTU co-chair this committee, and yet they haven't been able to give me a response? This is a year old when it's supposed to be done, and I think it's 45 days. I mean, we are in a crisis here in Boston with, with the process and, I guess, the overall structure of how things are operating within BPS. We just have nowhere to go. There are no answers coming, and it's exhausting. I'm just sharing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Tracy Koots, followed by Narida Tejeda, Catalina Montez, and Carrie Benjamin. If you can, please raise your hands virtually. Tracy?
Hello. Good evening. My name is Tracy Koots. I'm a teacher at the Gardner Pilot Academy and have worked there for 15 years. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm speaking again tonight about my deep concern for the GPA community after the sudden and unexpected removal of our principal Erica Herman on November 27th and the directive provided on February 5th to prohibit our assistant principal, Jo Sara, from any interaction with students or families at our school. This directive to have no contact with students or families while working in a school is incomprehensible to me. Jo is an experienced and dedicated leader at our school. He has worked tirelessly over the years to develop and maintain trusting relationships with families and students, but instead of being able to help students and families, he is being asked to sit in his office and complete paperwork. During my time at GPA, I've watched our school transform into a better version of itself year after year. Our school's focus has always been on doing what is right for students and families. And the decision to remove Erica Herman and silence Jo Sara has jeopardized everything that we've built and worked so hard to maintain. Instead of continuing to move forward and thrive as a school community, we are now stalled and broken, and it will take years to repair the damage that has been done. In a letter to the community on December 19th, Dr. Eccleston said that the district is currently investigating reports that allegations of bullying and bias-based conduct were not reported and appropriately handled at the Gardner. At GPA, we take bullying and bias-based behavior very seriously. We are not only reactive, we are also proactive. We hold restorative justice circles. We've implemented the Discovering Justice alum and teachers have participated in professional development focused on culturally responsive practices for years. This is the work that we do. The documentation should be an easy fix. Even with our challenges, our school is great, and I'm asking that please reinstate Erica Herman so that our school can begin to heal.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Narida Tejeda.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening, members of the school committee. You all have in your inbox my report as two minutes, not enough. My name is Narida Tejeda, family liaison at the Gardner Pilot Academy and a parent of BPS. You are the school committee responsible to oversight and management of the superintendent. You rated the superintendent as a proficient in her summative evaluation as the majority of U-Rater heard as an effective and standard-three family and community engagement. Yet, the family of the Gardner could not even get her to come here and meet in person. She could not curve out an hour of her day to visit the Gardner in person to hear the voices of her families and students. As the parent of BPS, I rate the performance of Mary Skipper as not effective in fostering authentic family and community engagement. We, as parent and employee, are supposed to trust you. You will do your job to follow through on your responsibility as a Boston School Committee member. I expect you, as the supervisor of Mary Skipper, to investigate an allegation coming from the Gardner community that she has engaged in misconduct, engaged in highly unethical behavior that is unbecoming of a superintendent. We have heard one of the reasons that Dr. Herman was placed on paid administrative leave was due to report made by families to central office. Yet, on December, you're in a governor board meeting, it was reported that six allegations came to central office via family. On our family coffee hour in January, it was reported that 10 allegations was now made by family. I find this to be very suspect, given our family's report that they will have no idea how to office and/or nor have ever heard of Christine Landry, Drew Ercoson, Naim Aldam until November 27. This administration has hidden behind confidentiality to not share any information with this comedian in our community. I urge this community who manage the superintendent immediately to investigate the action of superintendent and her leadership and her team. It is your job to ensure that our families and students has the best honesty, transparency, and a leadership and demonstrate integrity. It is your job.
Thank you, Narida. Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Catalina Montez.
Hello. My grandmother, Catalina Montez, has laryngitis. I will be speaking on her behalf. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Dr. Catalina Montez, and I was a resident of Boston for almost 60 years with 45 years of dedicated service to children of Boston and BPS. I am also the former principal of the Gardner Pilot Academy, serving in that role for 16 years. I am here tonight in complete dismay and revulsion at what this administration is doing to the Gardner Pilot Academy, conducting a so-called investigation that leaves a successful school at risk. Superintendent Skipper recently shared the agreement with UMass saying that the BCLA McCormick would be the first university-assisted community hub school. This was a point of celebration during Mayor Wu's State of the City address. I would like to inform you that the Gardner was and is the first university-assisted community hub school in Boston, partnering with BC, BU, Leslie, Harvard, and Harvard Business School for over 30 years. Just a few short months ago, Ed Vestas released the report titled, "Building a Coherent Community Hub School Strategy in Boston", which elevated our work at the Gardner as a model for the city. Superintendent Skipper was present in 2022 and 2023 when this work was recognized. It is so disheartening to see years of work being dismantled because of the acts of this administration. The superintendent has claimed they are inducting an investigation into allegations made about Principal Dr. Erica Herman. I have known Erica for over 20 years and served as her mentor and a second mother. She is a leader, a woman of great integrity, kindness, and strength dedicated to the children, families, and staff she serves. The district is using their power to silence and erase the work of the Gardner. This is an abuse of your power. You are spending thousands of dollars on a fishing expedition investigation. Our children and families deserve so much better. I call on this committee to look into this investigation and abuse of power by the BPS superintendent's office. I call on you to investigate the abusive behaviors and unfair practices.
Thank you, Catalina. Thank you for sharing your comments. Our next speaker is Carrie Benjamin, followed by Sharon Hinton, Anna Ramirez, Hortensia Calderon, Sonia Medina, and Nicolasa Lopez. If you could please raise your hands virtually in zoom. Carrie?
Good evening, Superintendent Skipper and School Committee members. My name is Carrie Benjamin, and I'm a parent of two children at the James F. Condon School in South Boston. This is my fourth year as a parent at the Condon. I'm here tonight to advocate for critical positions that were cut from next year's budget, an assistant principal, a secretary, and staff assistants. These resources are particularly vital to the health and safety of the Condon. Our school serves a high-need community. Over the past four years, I have seen our incredible staff stretch themselves to provide support for students and their families, from clothing to food to going above and beyond to respond to learners' individual needs. Reducing staff capacity on a team that is already dealing with complex needs will stretch our team further. We risk losing even the most dedicated educators and staff members to burnout if it becomes necessary to take on new responsibilities while providing support to our students. The building is also a community center where people are coming and going throughout the school day, and appropriately staffing the front office is critical to a safe school environment. In addition, having assistants who can stay past contractual hours if buses are running late is also necessary for student safety. Under the leadership of our new principal, Ms. Gregory, we have ambitious plans and a clear vision for a school that enables all our children to thrive. I'm proud of the improvements we've made in family engagement in the past year. We have a new after-school program, and we have plans to offer a before-school program next year. We have seen decreasing enrollment and sorry, we have seen decreasing enrollment, and we are working hard to engage and retain our families. It is a true highlight for me whenever I am able to join a school event or read in a classroom. And I hope that you will have an opportunity to visit the school and meet our staff and see the progress we're making in the school we can become. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sharon Hinton. She's not in the meeting. Let's try Anna Ramirez.
Buenas noches, la señora Anna Ramirez. Está presente.
Hello.
Si, si la escuchamos, señora Ramirez. Adelante, me escucha. Si la estamos escuchando, un poco interrumpido, pero va hablando espacio para que le pueda interpretar. Adelante.
Eres, soy madre de dos alumnos de GPA.
I'm a mother. I have two children at the Gardner Pilot Academy.
Estoy aquí porque quiero pedirle al comité y al superintendente que por favor regresen a la directora Herman.
The reason why I'm here is because I would like to have the committee and the superintendent intended to please return Mr. Herman to her job.
Necesitamos que se involucren en la escuela. Necesitamos que la directora regrese.
We need the director back.
Necesitamos transparencia y honestidad aparte de ustedes.
We need transparency. We need honesty coming from you on your behalf.
Lo que está pasando en la escuela es preocupante.
It is very concerning what is happening at the school right now.
El día de ayer, en la mañana, porque había buses esperando.
Puede repetir, perdón, no lo escuché muy bien. Otra vez.
El día de ayer, cuando llegué a la escuela, vi buses esperando porque no había una persona adulta quien guiara a los niños a la entrada.
So, yesterday, actually, as a matter of fact, there were buses waiting there by the entrance because there was no adult present to guide the kids to enter the school.
Esta situación es preocupante. Por esta situación me enteré que el señor Sara.
So, this situation is very concerning, and it came to my knowledge that Mr. Sara.
No puede tener comunicación con nosotros, los padres, ni con los alumnos.
He was told that he cannot communicate with us as parents, and he cannot communicate with the students, that I was told about that.
Señores, ustedes están creando un ambiente hostil, no grato en la escuela por las decisiones mal tomadas que están haciendo.
Ladies and gentlemen, you are creating a hostile environment due to the decisions that you are making at this moment.
Uno de ustedes quiero que se pongan en el lugar de nosotros como padres porque creo que ustedes tienen hijos también.
To each of you, you have to empathize with us. You have to put in our shoes as parents because we do believe that you have children as well.
Esto es vergonzoso, señores. Ustedes hablan de que la señora Skipper es una educadora admirable?
So, this is a shame. This is very shameful. You do mention that Madam Skipper is an admirable educator.
Y ahora le pido a ella tercera vez porque ella no se involucra en nuestra escuela como lo hacen otras escuelas.
So, I do take this as third opportunity and to ask Madam Skipper, why you do not get involved the same way you do with our school, with other schools. You should get involved with our school as well. Why you don't do it?
Que ella vaya a ver por sus propios ojos cómo están nuestras escuelas, lo que están formando de ella.
So, it is very important that you go there and you witness in person what is happening, what is transcribing at our own school.
Thirty seconds.
Treinta segundos, señora Ramirez.
Así que les pido, por favor, que tomen asunto en esto. Que el lugar que cada uno de ustedes ocupa es gracias a nuestros hijos. Ese trabajo que ustedes tienen es gracias a nuestros niños que están en la escuela. Así que, por favor, pido que se involucren y que tomen cartas en el asunto.
I'm asking, please, to get involved. I'm asking you, please, to take action in this matter. You should take responsibility because the job that you all have is because of our children. Thank you very much. Please get involved. Please take responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next. Thank you. Our next speaker is Hortensia Calderon.
Buenas noches, señora Hortensia Calderon tiene la palabra, usted.
Can you please unmute?
Tiene el micrófono apagado, señora Calderon. Tiene que habilitar el micrófono para que se le pueda escuchar. Puede empezar otra vez. Lo apagó otra vez. Prendalo, por favor.
Muchas gracias. Muy buenas noches. Mi nombre es Hortensia Calderon.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Hortensia Calderon. Good evening, everybody, and thank you very much for having me.
Y pertenezco al vecindario de Roxbury.
I do live in Roxbury, in that neighborhood.
Gracias por la oportunidad.
Thank you very much.
Mis nietas son estudiantes de la, de Boston Public School, y estoy aquí para dar mi testimonio de que cuando existe un entendimiento, comprensión, y un real deseo de lograr las metas, sí se puede.
I'm here to tell you that, actually, my granddaughters, they're part of the Boston Public Schools. And I'm here to tell you that when there is an understanding, when there is comprehension, and when there is a real desire to understand the goals you're working towards, everything is possible.
Como padres hemos estado luchando y empujando por una pausa al programa de inclusión de los estudiantes-aprendices del idioma inglés en las escuelas públicas.
As parents, we've been fighting, we've been pushing for a pause regarding the inclusion program at the Boston Public Schools.
Hicimos llegar una petición firmada por más de 300 familias de más de 50 escuelas.
As a matter of fact, we were able to collect over 300 signatures from more than 50 schools, over 300 signatures, a petition.
Quiero públicamente agradecer por esa respuesta a nuestra petición.
I would like to publicly appreciate and acknowledge the response that we had regarding this petition.
Gracias por escucharnos y pausar el plazo de inclusión para los aprendices del idioma inglés del séptimo grado.
And thank you very much to put a pause on this inclusion program for the English language learners that belong to seventh grade.
Es bueno que también hagan lo mismo para los grados de preescolar y kinder.
It is important to do the same type of initiative, thinking about the kindergartens and the preschools. Same thing has to be done.
Hasta tener un buen proceso comunitario para decidir en el programa para los estudiantes-aprendices del idioma inglés.
It is important to have a good community process to be able to decide on the programs that are going to be implemented to favor the English language learners.
Por ejemplo, mis nietas asisten a la escuela Hurley.
As a matter of fact, my granddaughters are going to the Hurley School.
Que es de idioma dual.
Which has a dual program as well.
Ellas aprendieron a escribir y leer español conmigo en casa.
Actually, learn how to write, how to read in Spanish in my own house.
Y la escuela ha reforzado sus habilidades.
And the school's role has been to reinforce those abilities I cultivated at home.
Hoy día estoy muy contenta que sean bilingües.
As a matter of fact, makes me very happy that nowadays I can say that they are bilingual.
Pero la escuela Hurley también tiene muchos fondos que los padres recaudan para hacer posible sus programas.
Have to point out as well that the Hurley School has many financial funds that the parents actually collect to be able to implement these programs that I'm referring to.
Seventeen seconds.
Me preocupo por las otras escuelas que no tienen estos mismos recursos.
I'm very concerned about the other schools that do not have these financial resources.
El presupuesto de BPS da para una educación. El presupuesto de BPS da para una educación de alta calidad para todos los niños que aprenden el inglés.
Mi pregunta es, ¿el presupuesto de BPS es suficiente para promover la calidad para todos los aprendices del idioma inglés?
Gracias nuevamente y es nuestro deseo que, al igual que esta...
Muchas gracias. Es nuestro deseo que...
Nuestras demandas no solo sean escuchadas.
Gracias, Hortensia.
Las demandas no solo son escuchadas, sino... Gracias, señora Hortensia.
Gracias. Nuestra siguiente oradora es Sonia Medina.
Señora Sonia Medina tiene la palabra en este momento.
Sonia, tenemos dificultad en escucharla. Creo que todavía no podemos escuchar.
No la podemos escuchar todavía.
Sonia, volveremos a usted.
Vamos a regresar después, señora Sonia.
Volveremos a Sonia. Intentaremos Nicolás López.
Vamos a regresar de vuelta, Sonia. Después, cuando se resuelva el problema del micrófono, vamos a continuar con Nicolás López.
Nicolás será seguido por Erin Birmingham Anadu, Rupture Foster, Carol Garcia, Ruby Reyes y Ryan Kelly. Si pueden, levanten sus manos virtualmente. Nicolás.
Sí.
Hola, buenas noches.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Nicolás López, la directora de la comunidad de la familia en la Academia de Garner Piloto, ex padre de BPS, miembro del comité escolar. Has oído los gritos de la comunidad de Garner pidiendo transparencia y honestidad sobre la deshacer de nuestro principal, el doctor Herman. Más que un comentario en el final de la reunión, este comité ha mantenido silencio, ignorando las voces de la comunidad. 22 familias, docentes y miembros de la comunidad han testificado durante las tres reuniones escolares y más están por venir esta noche. Una carta fue leída con 220 firmas de familia pidiendo que tome acción que fue enviada al comité. Cada uno de ustedes recibió muchos llamados y correos de miembros de la comunidad, docentes y familia más que lo que se compartió públicamente en esta reunión. En el mundo del doctor Martin Luther King, ha llegado un momento en el que el silencio es una traición. El fallo de hablar es un medio en el que estás complicado en lo que está pasando alrededor de ti. He oído que es el rol de la superintendente manejar la operación de la distrito y manejar el tema individual, personal, lo que es por lo que ninguno de ustedes ha tomado acción. Es su responsabilidad encargarse, manejar y evaluar la superintendencia. Y aquí estoy aquí para usted esta noche pidiendo que haga su trabajo como comité escolar para tomar responsabilidad y asegurar la administración responsable de las acciones. Su fallo de agregar es una traición a la responsabilidad como comité escolar y contribuir más a la narrativa de la corrupción, las mentiras que existen dentro de la escuela pública de Boston. Sé que estoy tomando mucho riesgo viendo aquí esta noche y compartiendo esta información. He oído la historia de esta administración, intimidación, arraigamiento y retaliación. Estoy avanzando ante este riesgo porque es mi deber civil apoyar a los estudiantes y la familia de esta ciudad. Estoy en solidaridad con nuestros estudiantes y la familia de la Academia de Garner Piloto. Esto es educación diaria, la vida de hoy y el futuro. Por favor, haga su trabajo y asegúrense de la administración responsable. Esto no es solo un tema de la comunidad.
Gracias, Nicolás. Nuestra siguiente oradora es Erin Birmingham Anadu.
Hola. Mi nombre es Erin Birmingham Anadu. Soy residente de Rosendale y una madre de un tercero en la Escuela Elementary de JP Manning. Todos nuestros hijos han asistido a la Manning y nuestra familia es eternamente agradecida con la escuela y con BPS. Digo esto porque nuestro mayor comenzó en la Manning cuando tenía solo tres años y casi no verbal. Ahora está en el séptimo grado y el mes pasado participó en el torneo de debate de la Universidad Suffolk. El verdadero entorno de aprendizaje inclusivo hizo diferente al mundo. Testifico esta noche porque como madre me preocupa el camino que está a lo largo de la Manning. No estoy sola. En la última encuesta del clima escolar de la escuela, sólo el 8% de los docentes dijo que estaban optimistas sobre el futuro de la escuela. Ocho. El 29 de enero, nuestra comunidad escolar recibió un correo electrónico de nuestro nuevo director que informaba que debido a un cambio de foco y déficit de presupuesto, un cambio en nuestro modelo de enseñanza actual es inminente. Los miembros de la comunidad escolar están reportando que este cambio inminente es el final del modelo de coenseñanza de dos maestros. El mismo modelo que ha proporcionado un entorno de aprendizaje sostenible, seguro y verdaderamente inclusivo durante años. En 2023, la Manning fue una de cuatro escuelas elementales de BPS reconocidas por DESI como una escuela de reconocimiento con un 97% alcanzando o excediendo objetivos. Cuando la Manning fue finalista para el premio "Escuela en el movimiento", nuestro modelo de coenseñanza fue destacado como un factor clave para el éxito del estudiante. Todos ustedes son mucho más educados en las prácticas educativas que yo, pero incluso yo puedo decirles que dos es mejor que uno. Hay mucha información sobre el éxito de los estudiantes sin discapacidad coenseñanzas en las aulas, pero no he encontrado ninguna que reclame menos maestros, menos apoyo, menos atención dedicada. Cada uno de nuestros maestros en la Manning es un trabajador esencial. La ciencia, arte, música y biblioteca son esenciales. El modelo de enseñanza actual de la Manning debería ser replicado inminentemente en toda la ciudad de Boston, no se rompe. Gracias.
Gracias. No veo a Rupture Foster en la reunión, así que nuestra siguiente oradora será Carol Garcia, seguida por Ruby Reyes, Ryan Kelly, Michelle Duval y Marie Yasanth Nawiki. Por favor, levanten sus manos virtualmente en Zoom, Carol. Carol no está con nosotros, así que intentemos a Ruby Reyes.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Ruby Reyes y soy la directora ejecutiva de la Alianza de Justicia de la Educación de Boston y residente de Dorchester. En la encuesta de presupuesto de la semana pasada, la superintendente Skipper y su equipo movieron puestos soft y posiciones inadecuadas para que fuera cubierto por la financiación estatal. Las posiciones financiadas tenían el privilegio de saber que sus posiciones serían reducidas en tres años. Sin embargo, estas posiciones que originalmente fueron cubiertas por puestos soft y fondos inadecuados fueron posiciones que fueron indicadas como vitales para la comunidad escolar y necesitaban permanecer independientemente del descanso. El proceso de financiación escolar reimaginado era supuesto para apoyar a las comunidades escolares para que no tuvieran que experimentar consistentemente el trauma de tener que luchar año tras año para mantener posiciones vitales que apoyan a sus comunidades escolares. Veremos que las comunidades escolares perderán a la gente, algunas en las cifras doble debido a la decisión de la superintendente Skipper de mover estas posiciones a la financiación estatal en el presupuesto de la semana pasada. A pesar de saber que el cliff fiscal de perder la financiación estatal estaba a punto de surgir, Beja puso a ver el plan para reemplazar esos fondos. En lugar de eso, el BPS creó el problema y ahora está cortando posiciones bajo la premisa de re imaginando formas de hacer menos daño. Concomida con los planes de inclusión, algunos de los cuales no han sido financiados completamente, las escuelas que necesitaban el mayor apoyo debido al declive de adquisición están enfrentando el bruto de pérdidas presupuestarias. ¿Qué se imaginó? El proceso de presupuesto reimaginado se pretendía para que se imaginaran cómo podían proporcionar equidad y no exacerbar el cliff fiscal que sabían que venía y que no planeaban. Beja pidió repetidamente un plan que asegurara que los estudiantes y las escuelas con las mayores necesidades no se danan daño. Una vez más, Beja pidió planificación financiera para asegurar que haya equidad para las escuelas que son las más vulnerables debido al declive de adquisición. Gracias.
Gracias. Nuestra siguiente oradora es Ryan Kelly. Ryan está declinando la petición, así que intentemos a Michelle Duval.
Hola, lo siento, lo disculpo. Estaba en una reunión de PTA también aquí. No tengo una expresión de elegancia como algunos de nuestros otros oradores esta noche, pero estoy aquí para hablar sobre nuestras reducciones de presupuesto. Mis hijos van a la escuela Lindon Pilot de Roxbury, y debido a casi un millón de dólares en reducciones de presupuesto, estamos perdiendo varias posiciones a cara de estudiantes, incluidos trabajadores sociales, paraprofesionales, un maestro de tecnología y un maestro español. Después de las reducciones presupuestarias de la semana pasada, nuestro programa español pasó de la cuarta grado a una secundaria electiva y ahora no existe. Y la próxima vez no tendremos una clase de tecnología. Cuando busquen estos temas en el sitio web del Departamento de Educación, dice que incentivamos a todos los estudiantes a ganar literatura digital y necesitamos literatura digital para prepararlos para personal y eficacia civil. En cuanto a la lengua mundial, hace que los estudiantes estén listos para ser ciudadanos globales, pero ya no en la Lindon. Cuanto más cosas se nos quitan, más estudiantes salen y entonces estamos atrapados en este ciclo vicioso que desearía que supiera cómo terminar. Especialmente como miembro de una PTA, hemos estado trabajando tan duro para hacer sentirse en comunidad y animar a la gente a quedarse aquí, pero simplemente no podemos hacer eso cuando seguimos perdiendo programas y maestros cada año. Todavía veo mucho bien en BPS y personalmente no quiero dejar BPS. Nos encanta aquí. Sentí que gané la lotería cuando nos aceptaron a la Lindon y es por eso que estoy en la PTA aquí también. Así que gracias por su trabajo duro, pero necesitamos trabajar más duro. Y también queremos una dona del NDA nacional para una feria de semillas en la fiesta de fin de semana aquí en la Lindon, así que animaría a algunos de nuestros miembros de la comunidad escolar a asistir. Gracias.
Gracias. Nuestra siguiente oradora es Michelle Duval.
Buenas noches y gracias por esta oportunidad de hablar contigo hoy. Mi nombre es Michelle Duval. Como integrante de la comunidad de la Academia de Garner, estoy aquí para obtener claridad sobre los eventos que resultaron en la deshacer de Dr. Erica Herman como principal de GPA. Estoy profundamente indignada por la falta de transparencia del distrito que rodea este evento y la destrucción que ha causado en la mayor comunidad. Además, quiero decirles sobre mi experiencia de trabajo con Erica durante las últimas dos décadas. Soy la directora del programa de educación adulta, ESOL para adultos en GPA. Fui a la Gardner dos décadas atrás cuando mi currículum consistía en ofertas limitadas para una población mucho necesitada. Durante estos últimos 20 años, bajo la dirección de Erica Herman, he visto a las familias, estudiantes y maestros prosperar en un entorno de aceptación, tolerancia, diversidad y apoyo, tanto materialmente como a medida que la comunidad ha crecido y también emocionalmente como todos fuimos parte de una familia más grande, sensible no solo a problemas educativos sino también a los desafíos de la experiencia inmigrante. Muchos de nuestros estudiantes de GPA vienen de familias que vinieron a este país para darles oportunidades para combinar con nuestra cultura de Nueva Inglaterra sin borrar sus propios lenguajes y heredades. La liderazgo de Erica ha sido el glase que nos ha unido todos juntos a medida que hemos crecido y ampliado nuestras ofertas. El estilo de liderazgo de Erica es inclusivo en un momento en el que tantas partes de nuestra sociedad y instituciones son divisivas. Mientras trabajamos junto a Erica, el programa de educación adulta ha crecido para incluir ocho niveles diferentes de aprendizaje de lengua construyendo conexiones entre las familias.
Gracias.
Gracias.
Gracias. Te agradecería enviar tus comentarios escritos.
Sí, lo hice. Gracias.
Gracias. Nuestra siguiente oradora es Marie Yasanth Nawiki, seguida por Jake Dempsey, Alexandria King, Amanda Robinson y Victoria Home. Por favor, levanten sus manos en Zoom. Marie.
Buenas noches. ¿Me escuchas?
Sí, buenas noches.
Buenas noches. Primero, me gustaría agradecer a la comunidad escolar y aprecio la oportunidad de expresar mis opiniones sobre la situación con nuestro principal, el doctor Erica Herman y el señor Sarah. Soy la enfermera en la Academia de Garner desde septiembre de 2019 y solo conozco a Miss Herman y el señor Sarah a nivel profesional. Miss Herman es un líder fuerte y corajoso. También es amable y compasiva. Mantienen un balance excelente, en mi opinión. He visto que va más allá de todo su esfuerzo para crear un ambiente de aprendizaje seguro, amable, feliz, enriquecido y vigoroso para las familias y la gente en GPA. El señor Sarah ha trabajado muy duro para asegurar que todo funciona bien en la escuela todos los días. Lo llamo el hombre de los octopus y puede sonar terrible, pero es una gran cosa porque digo que tienes tantas manos. Estás en todas partes en la escuela al mismo tiempo. Tomas cuidado de tantas cosas. Es increíble. Y no sé qué haría la escuela sin él. Y lo que me gusta de la GPA desde que he estado aquí es que las expectativas son altas. Todos esperamos sumarse como un equipo y trabajamos juntos para hacer que las cosas se hagan. He visto que el principal Herman y el señor Sarah trabajaron sin parar para desarrollar actividades de enriquecimiento para los estudiantes, la gente y las familias que contribuirían a la bondad de la comunidad así como para animarnos a celebrar nuestras diferencias y promover el respeto para todas las culturas y género también. No he visto...
Gracias, Marie. Pasen su tiempo. Nuestra siguiente oradora es Jake Dempsey.
Hola, ¿me escuchas?
Sí, buenas noches.
Buenas noches. Estoy aquí porque creo que la acción que el distrito ha tomado contra el principal adjunto Joe Sarah es incorrecta y debería revertirse inmediatamente. Desde que he sido madre de la Academia de Garner, Joe Sarah ha estado afuera de la escuela todos los días, invitando a los estudiantes de los autobuses y los autos. Pero esta semana no ha estado allí. He aprendido que la razón de su ausencia es que el distrito le ha prohibido hablar con los niños, la gente y los padres. Si conoces a Joe Sarah, entonces entenderás lo increíblemente cruel que es. Como el señor Sarah no es autorizado a realizar la mayoría de sus deberes, me gustaría saber quién está actualmente encargado de la disciplina de los estudiantes, siguiendo las incidentes y haciendo el trabajo restorative de justicia que hace que la Gardner sea un entorno de aprendizaje seguro. Tenemos un principal interno que no está licenciado para el rol. ¿Vale la pena tomar el trabajo de el señor Sarah también? El señor Sarah ha estado ayudándome y mi hijo con la situación. ¿Quién seguirá con nosotros sobre eso? El señor Sarah está en la escuela desde el inicio de la jornada escolar hasta muy tarde en la noche. ¿Quién en la escuela llenará ese hueco de apoyo y servicio? No puedo entender por qué el distrito tan severamente limitó al señor Sarah excepto que tal vez el plan sea esperar hasta después de la reunión comunitaria para despedirlo. Espero que no sea el caso. Él fue y sigue siendo una de las razones por las que la Gardner es la escuela que es. Estoy apalzada con la forma en que un educador donado como Joe Sarah se trata y te imploro a que le dejes hacer su trabajo y termines las investigaciones sobre su trabajo. Me gustaría ver al señor Sarah mañana invitando a mis hijos a la escuela. Por favor, deshazte del daño que has hecho. Gracias.
Gracias. Nuestra siguiente oradora es Alexandria King.
¿Puedes escucharme?
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Alexandria King, and I'm a parent at Gardner Pilot Academy and a longtime Dorchester resident. I'm testifying on behalf of the Gardner Pilot Academy community to show my support for Assistant Principal Mr. Joe Sauer. Mr. Sauer is the heart and backbone of GPA. I've been a part of the community for over 15 years as my ex has worked there. My kids have gone there. I've had a son graduate from there, and I currently have a third grader that is at the school. Uh, over the years, Mr. Sauer has been there not only to support myself, my family, but every single family at GPA. And every single family, he makes you feel like you are his top priority, no matter what is going on. Every single year, I also have issues with BPS transportation, transportation, as someone else brought up in the meeting earlier, and Mr. Sauer is the only person in the entire BPS that ever cares about these issues and makes sure that my kids can get to school as they needed to. He has clear communication. He offers support anytime and he follows up whenever it's needed. The children look to Mr. Sauer for support as well, which is, so I, it's so important for him to be there during this time that their principal is currently on a leave of absent. During the spring and fall on Saturdays, you will find Mr. Sauer in the soccer field in the heart of the neighborhood that most of the kids come from, as he's there with the kids, being loving and helping and making sure that they are growing and having outside activities that they need to. Knowing Mr. Sauer all these years, he's one of the most caring, wonderful, patient, passionate educators I've ever met, and I am terrified what GPA will look like without his support. I asked the board to reconsider the request that Mr. Sauer not be able to communicate with parents, be able to communicate with the students again as they need him for their support. Our students need support right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amanda Robinson.
Hello?
Hi, good evening.
Hi, my name's Amanda Robinson. I have two kids at the GPA, um, Gardner Pilot Academy. So, I'm, I'm here today because I really strongly feel that we need our leader back, Erica Herman, and we definitely need Joe Sauer to be able to communicate with the parents as well as the students while she's not there and even after she returns. My son had a situation last school year, and the only person that is able to communicate with the hospital and that's been helping him through this is Mr. Sauer, and he needs Mr. Sauer to be able to get through his school day. He needs Mr. Sauer to greet him when he gets off of the bus and to put him on the bus so that he can know he's gonna have a smooth ride to school. Going into the school the other day, the energy isn't the same as it usually would be whenever I entered the school. So, I feel like we need both of our leaders back, front and center, waiting dearly for the kids, greeting them when they come in, and just being around the school with the bubbly energy and everything that they have. I don't feel that there would be anyone else that can run Gardner Pilot the way that Erica and Joe Sauer does. So, I'm asking for them to immediately be put back in their positions where they belong.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Victoria Hom, followed by Sean Anderson, Stephanie Wang, Randy Davis, Solange Smith, and Kaylee Mederada. Please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Victoria?
Hello, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you. Good evening. My name is Victoria Hom. I am a resident of Brighton and former parent at the Gardner Pilot Academy. My children attended GPA from K1 through sixth grade, and I served as a parent rep on the governing board for 10 years. During the last school committee meeting, you discussed how the district is working to ensure that the environment in every school is such that every student is seen and has a sense of belonging, feels welcome, and wanted with access to multiple layers of support and myriad opportunities. You talked about how important it is that they have access to high-quality instruction, high-quality instructional materials, high expectations, alongside wraparound services and supports. What you described was what my children experienced at GPA. They had that experience because of the leadership and the support of Principal Erica Herman and Assistant Principal Joe Sauer. While no school is perfect, and no school leader is perfect, I saw how they provided the conditions for their educators, staff, and partners to do their jobs effectively. I saw how Dr. Herman and Mr. Sauer centered students and elevated student voice in every decision they made. Over the course of our 12 years there, we saw the school grow into a tier-one institution, a model community-type school. Yet, for unclear reasons, the superintendent suddenly removed Dr. Herman from her position in November and has limited Mr. Sauer to compliance reporting with essentially no contact with community members. These actions have dismantled the school leadership and thereby not only putting the school culture at risk, but most certainly the gains the school has made over the last 10 to 20 years. I implore the superintendent to reinstate Dr. Herman and remove the restrictions on Mr. Sauer. These leaders fostered an environment where students could be held accountable and grow from their mistakes. That's what we do in school. We learn and we grow. If you truly believe that's the rule and role of, and value of schools, please do that. Allow them to return in full capacity. They can be held accountable and continue to learn. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sean Anderson.
There. Can you hear me now?
Yes, good evening.
Thank you. My name is Sean Anderson. I live in Brighton. I'm a parent of two children in BPS, both of whom attended the Gardner Pilot Academy through sixth grade. Many things make for a great school. Among the most important are the culture and the community that makes students feel they are welcome, that they belong, and that they are heard. I always felt that this was something that GPA had, and one of the major reasons for this was Assistant Principal Joe Sauer. He knows the kids by name. He goes out of his way to welcome them, and his energy and warmth helped make the GPA the special place that it is. Or unfortunately, maybe that it was. The ongoing district-enforced changes at GPA are disheartening. The latest move of limiting Joe Sauer's interaction with the students and stifling his ability to communicate with the school community is further dismantling the culture that was so assiduously developed. What started with an abrupt removal of Ms. Herman from her role, for some reason that remains unclear, continues to escalate. We remain in the dark as to what the root issue is, having been told only that when we see the report of the investigation, we would understand why these steps are being taken, but so far, no report has been shared. As a scientist and engineer, I believe strongly in being led by the data, working to put aside preconceived notions, and striving to avoid biases when making decisions. While I disagreed with the decisions the district took and the manner in which they were taken, I at least had some confidence there was a good-faith effort going on. These latest actions with, with Joe Sauer have shattered that confidence. It feels there may be a preconceived notion behind this, an assumption of wrongdoing that is not being supported by any investigation, that the district feels need to silence voices in the school, and voices who care deeply about the students, their education and well-being, so that they can control the narrative to tell the story they want. That personal biases may be leading the district to ignore the reality and instead look for things to bolster what they want, whatever that may be, and eliminate anything that disagrees with their vision. I urge you to remove the restrictions that have been put in place, stop trying to dismantle the culture of student caring and support that exists at GPA, and focus on collaborative approaches that bring us all together to enhance opportunities for these and all BPS students. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephanie Wang.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Wang, and I have been a teacher in the BPS for over 10 years. I have been a special education teacher at the Gardner Pilot Academy for the past four years. Dear Superintendent Skipper, first and foremost, I want to acknowledge and thank Region Four School Superintendent Christine Landry, Region Four Operational Leader Naima Abdal, and Interim Principal at the Gardner, Catherine Atkins Patinson, for their continued support, guidance, and leadership during this difficult time. I am writing this letter to you in support of Ms. Atkins Patinson's continued tenure as interim principal at GPA. Under Ms. AP's leadership, there's been transparency with families and staff, immediate and frequent communication, new implementation of systems and procedures, and an overall sense of organization and clear expectations. Ms. AP consistently exhibits a calm and professional demeanor, which has provided staff with an opportunity to engage in difficult conversations, ask questions, and provide suggestions and feedback without fear of retaliation, which is a welcome change from our previous administration. Most importantly, she continues to be student-facing and is present and engages with students on a daily basis. I would like to address some potential speculation that has been circulating amongst the superintendent's office and families. As an active member of the BPS and BTU, I have witnessed some of the conversations that have been happening at the school. I am fully aware that some families and staff have vehemently voiced concerns over the removal of Erica Herman. While it is the right of all to express their opinion and concern, and I applaud these people for their unwavering support in favor of Erica Herman, I respectfully request that only facts are considered.
Thank you for your comments. You're welcome to submit your written comments to the Committee for Distribution. Our next speaker is Randy Davis.
Good evening, Chair Robinson, Superintendent Skipper, and members of the school committee. My name is Randy Davis. I'm a licensed individual clinical social worker, and I work at the Gardner Pilot Academy School. Thank you for giving me a platform to speak. I want to highlight the changes that I've seen since Central Office has come to support our school. I value the teachers, staff, students, and families of our community that show up every day to support our students. I've been at GPA for five years, three years as a city connects coordinator, and two years as a school-based social worker. GPA has needed help understanding the rights of our students and families and following through on actions that protect our students. Right now, I feel that the level of transparency that Central Office, our acting principal, the staff members have put together is allowing students to feel safer. In the past, when I've had restorative justice circles for individual sessions, students often refer to moments where they have been bullied or bias-based language has been used against them, but when I have asked adult for help, there was a lack of action taken. They were consistently observing adults not take action on their concerns, and there was a widespread feeling that not enough was being done. Currently, teachers are being trained on the appropriate action steps, and parents are now getting communication about what's happening in the classroom. I feel validated that policies, procedures, and practices are moving towards the direction of being cohesive and consistent for all students and teachers. It is the BPS vision that we teach all, and it is finally happening. Thank you for the support that you have provided to our school.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Solange Smith.
Good evening. My name is Solange Smith. I'm a parent at Gardner Pilot Academy, and I'm from Hyde Park. I'm here again today to testify in regards to the issues at GPA. Last month, I was here um, to support our school leader, Dr. Herman, and demanded answers as to why she was unjustly removed from GPA. I am back again tonight, still looking for answers, and now with additional concerns regarding our Assistant Principal, Mr. Joseph Sauer. Yesterday afternoon, I became aware that Mr. Sauer was asked by the district to refrain from communicating with students, families, and staff. While Mr. Sauer has been physically present in the school building, he has been restricted from carrying out his duties. We have not received any explanation as to why this change has occurred. This is absurd. Mr. Sauer plays a critical role in the day-to-day operations at GPA. Mr. Sauer works tirelessly to ensure that students are safe and that's um, school staff are supported. Communicating with students, families, and school staff is a significant aspect of Mr. Sauer's role at GPA. The sudden absences of Dr. Herman and Mr. Sauer have been disruptive to the school community. There are many problems, as many people have voiced their concerns today. I'm not in the minority when I say this. The well-being of our students are at risk, and the quality of our students' education is at risk. This is unacceptable. I am requesting explanation as to why these unreasonable restrictions have been placed upon Mr. Sauer. What are the allegations against Mr. Sauer? What is the specific evidence to support these allegations, if any? What is the plan to restore GPA back to its normal functioning? The families of GPA deserve transparency and real answers. We need Mr. Sauer and Dr. Herman to return to GPA and continue to do the extraordinary work that they've been doing for so many years. Please do not destroy our school. Thank you for listening. I'll see you again soon.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kaylee Mederada, followed by Danielle Frame, Michael Bianchi, and then we will go back to Sonya Medina. Please raise your hands virtually. Kaylee?
Hi, sorry. Um, hi, my name is Kaylee Mederada. I live in Alston. I am currently pursuing a dual master's in education at BU, and I am a four para at the Gardner, and I wanted to share my experience working under Erica Herman as an example of the environment she creates. I was hired for the 23-24 school year in May 2023, and I applied for a para position for ages three to seven with the understanding both verbally and in writing that I could fulfill the specific teaching requirements for both elementary and special ed in this role. In mid-September, I raised concerns with my union and building reps about my inability to complete my master's program since being placed in a middle school math class and could not start my assignments. Building rep talked to Erica about my requirements. Within an hour, I received a calendar invite to meet with Erica the same day with no context for the meetings. My coworkers warned me, as Erica had a reputation for treating employees poorly in one-on-one meetings. In the meeting, Erica told me I do not have what it takes to be in education, and proposed a demotion to student-teacher in unpaid position without union protection. While emphasizing how I could not stay as a para, my BU professors told me that Erica had contacted them personally advocating for my removal from my master's program because she had witnessed firsthand that I do not have what it takes. Upon returning to school on Tuesday and receiving another vague calendar invite from Erica, I feared she would preserve, persist in what seems like a personal vendetta against me. I requested a building rep to join me. Throughout the meeting, Erica tried to manipulate my statements regarding my teaching abilities and was evasive about my BU requirements, and both I and the building rep felt that if she had not been there, Erica would have fired me. Erica scheduled a follow-up meeting for the end of the week, but canceled it when I notified her that I would be accompanied by a union rep. After enduring verbal harassment regarding my teaching ability, growing concerns about completing my program, and feeling targeted by Erica, I decided to seek a position where I could complete my master's requirement and be treated with respect, and I resigned my position at the Gardner. Prior to my first meeting with Erica, I have not received any complaints in any school setting or relationship built, and her actions remain inappropriate.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Our next speaker is Danielle Frame.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening, Chair Robinson, Superintendent Skipper, and members of the school committee. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Danielle Frame, and I am an ABA specialist at the Gardner Pilot Academy, where I have served for seven years. In my time at the Gardner, I have witnessed a loving community that prides itself on strong connections. I have had the opportunity to work in all classrooms and to see my students grow over the years. I've become an active member of a community that supports not only students, but staff as well. In my time there, I have been witness to the leadership of Erica Herman. I saw a leader who had said beautiful words, spoke about community, silenced concerned staff members, and selectively chose who received an education. Erica upheld a culture of silence, eliciting fear in her staff who spoke about their concerns. Even without her in the building, this culture is still thriving. You may be wondering why you have only heard dissatisfied voices in your several, in your last several meetings. This is because there's a silent majority that is afraid to speak out. Even now, after Erica's removal, Even now, after Erica's removal, sorry, even now after Erica's removal, the small group of parents and staff members who continue to testify on Erica's behalf are the minority. They speak about Erica's return rather than what is best for students and the school. They do not speak for all staff members, and they do for our students. Since Erica's removal, we have been witness to the students' top concern. As I stand here tonight addressing you, I am speaking in fear, fear of retaliation, fear of accusations, and fear of my fellow staff members isolating me. However, I am here with the conviction that I am ethically and morally obligated to speak on behalf of the students, parents, and staff members who have been silenced all these years. Superintendent Skipper, I want to thank you for your leadership and for putting all of our students at The Gardener first. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Danielle, there was a little bit of trouble with your audio coming in and out, so if you'd like to submit your written comments, you're welcome to do so. Michael Bianchi is not signed into the meeting, so we'll circle back to Sonia Medina. Sonia?
Sonia Medina. Sera Sonia Medina tiene la palabra.
Sonia, we're not hearing you. Very sorry, there's no audio, Sonia.
Disculpe, señora Sonia. Lo sentimos mucho, pero no el audio no se está escuchando. No se le está escuchando.
Please email your testimony to us.
Si, por favor, puede mandar su testimonio por correo electrónico. Le van a agradecer porque no se le está escuchando.
Thank you. Chair, that concludes our first hour of public comment.
Thank you, and I want to thank all of those who testified this evening. Your testimony and comments are very important to us. Our first action item this evening is the grants for approval totaling $75,000. Now I'd like to turn this over to the superintendent for any comments.
Thank you, Chair. So there's a few grants before you tonight that I'd just like to underscore. One of them is around the emergency homeless support. This is particularly applicable for our migrant students that are coming out of the emergency shelter I spoke about earlier. There is also another one for a pilot on cellphone usage. So this was something that was piloted across several schools to be able to curb student usage and be able to see kind of before-and-after engagement with school. So those are the two that are before you this evening. I would encourage you to vote favorably for them.
Great, thank you. I'll now open it up to questions and comments from the committee. Great. So if there are no questions, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, please call the roll.
Thank you. Dr. Alkins? Mr. Cadet Hernandez? Ms. Lima Barbosa? Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, excuse me, yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The grants are approved unanimously.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Our next action item is the MSBA Accelerator Repair Program Statements of Interest, which the superintendent presented to the committee earlier this evening. Superintendent, do you have any final comments?
No, just that I appreciate the work of the team to pull this together, and I think as we've addressed the questions, you can see the need and the urgency for as much support as we can get. So thank you for a favorable vote.
Thank you. I'll now open it up to the committee for any final questions or comments. Okay. So all right, if there's no further discussion, I'll now entertain a motion to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Board Authority the Statements of Interest for the following schools in the MSBA Accelerator Repair Program: Kenny Elementary School, O'Donnell Elementary School, Adams Elementary School, Chittick Elementary School, Everett Elementary School, Gardner Pilot Academy, Linden Elementary School, and Murphy K to eight. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins? Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Ms. Barbosa, can you unmute? She's frozen.
We can come back.
Okay.
Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Sorry, yes.
Thank you. The motion is approved unanimously.
Right, thank you. Our main report this evening is the superintendent's preliminary fiscal year 2025 budget recommendation. I'd like to remind our presenters to please speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. I'll now inter-- sorry, I'll now turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, I will formally present the FY25 budget to the school committee for your consideration. The total proposed budget for FY25 is $1,526,629,446. Normally, I would not be the person giving the presentation, but our interim CFO, David Bloom, and his wife Emily just welcomed their second child, Andrew Bloom, yesterday. We're so happy for David, Emily, and Big Sister Abigail, and we welcome Andrew and to the BPS class of 2042. Tonight's presentation kicks off the next two months of budget meetings and hearings. Tonight, we'll focus on a high-level overview of the FY25 budget. And on this slide, you can see the topics we will cover. The approach we took for the FY25 budget is different than the past few years. You'll hear those details tonight, and while we know that we're not yet where we need to be, this budget is an important step to shifting our current practices and the work we need to do so we can deliver for students. I've said it before, and I'll say it again, continuous progress must be the measure of our success. We cannot change the past, but we can impact the future. Before we dive into the details, I want to take a moment to ground the presentation in the vision we have for all students. We want all students to have a strong academic foundation, a community and resources that support them and their families, and many, many opportunities to explore their passions through art, music, athletics, debate, and so much more. This must be our focus and what we continue to strive for. If we're going to realize this vision, then we must lay a strong foundation that we can build on over the next several years. And we're at the starting line. My first year, we learned a lot and took a hard look at our reality, and the reality is, we are not meeting the needs of all of our students. And that reality is hard to face, but it's the truth. And if we're going to build the foundation required to deliver on the high-quality student experience our parents and students deserve and have told us they want, then we must set out our expectations that at times, this work will be messy. It will require multiple years, as the Council of Great City Schools audit said, and we must make the hard decisions that have been avoided for decades. The FY25 budget is the first year of many that prioritizes the work differently than in the past. Over the next several years, we'll do several things. We will move away from a weighted student formula that no longer adequately funds our schools. In this transitional year, we noticed that 50 schools saw enrollment declines. We wanted to ensure that those schools were able to provide services to their students. With weighted student formula, we would not have been able to do that. We also need to ensure all our schools can serve all our students by making major investments in the resources required to close the opportunity gaps for our Black and Brown students and provide a continuum of services to meet the needs of our students with disabilities and our multilingual learners. And finally, we need to shift the footprint of our schools so that our physical spaces better support the learning and experiences that our students want and deserve. This is not easy work. We will not see the results right away, but we must see this core work through. A big focus for the FY25 budget is the investment we are making to implement the first year of inclusive education. Dr. Chen is going to dive deeper into this in the next section, but I wanted to put in context the investment from the mayor and the city for our inclusive education work. In order to better serve our students, we must start by understanding and maximizing what we have. You'll see later in the presentation how the teacher-to-student ratio and the school building's staff-to-student ratio has continued to go down over the years, especially the last several years. We've made tremendous investments in the supports our students need: social workers, family liaisons, ESL teachers, special education educators, et cetera. But adding more staff doesn't immediately correlate to stronger outcomes for students. We first must invest in capacity building for our current staff through quality PD and skill building. We also must invest in additional programs to support our educators as they add licenses, certifications, and knowledge. This has been a big part of our work this year and will continue to be in the future. Last year, we had a total of $15 million to support the planning that was done for this school year. FY24 was mainly focused on the formation of inclusion planning teams. Each school is starting this work from a very different place and therefore requires different resources. Shortly, you'll hear more from Dr. Chen about our process for determining these resources by first starting with an understanding of what schools already have. For FY25, we're building on that $15 million and adding an additional $20 million investment to begin phasing in programmatic changes by certain grades as the Council of Great City Schools report recommended. For special education, we will start with implementing programmatic changes at K1, K2, 7th, and 9th. For our multilingual learners, we're implementing programmatic changes at K1 and K2 grade levels. These programmatic changes will continue sorry, they'll continue in additional grade levels in the future years. But I do want to just be clear that the work we are doing around implementing high-quality instructional materials, equitable literacy, and access to grade-level instruction, that that's happening across all grades. An important part of our planning this year was listening to different stakeholders. We've made adjustments along the way based on that feedback, particularly in our multilingual plans. And as you can see in the slide, we have three more years before we implement across all grades, and this year and next year are important learning years for us. We'll continue to engage with school teams, families, and different community stakeholders as we plan for the next few years out. I'll be quick on this slide, but we wanted to share the entire budget process to put some context around how this year has gone. We started this process as soon as school began and are currently still meeting with departments centrally to determine budgets. Following the school committee vote in March, we'll then present our FY25 budget to the city council with a final vote from the council in June. That's the timeline. This next slide shows a more detailed version where we are and what you and the public can expect over the next few weeks. We'll dive deeper into school budgets at the February 15th meeting and the central budget at the March 4th. And more information can always be found on our website, and members of the public can submit questions and comments using the QR code on this slide. Before I turn it over to Dr. Chen, I want to share a little bit more about the different approach that we took with schools. We're moving from an old model of one teacher responsible for a certain group of students to a team-based teaching approach. A team-based teaching approach means that every classroom with a homeroom teacher serving students with disabilities and/or multilingual learners will have additional resources beyond just the classroom teacher. Depending on the students really will determine the additional resources that need to be added in. But some examples include a homeroom teacher working with a team that includes a special educator and/or an ESL teacher and/or a para to collectively create inclusive opportunities and provide the services students need. This is really meant rethinking how we align school funding by planning for our highest-need students first and looking holistically at current structures, students, staffing, and program. And I just want to emphasize that. This really means rethinking how we align school funding by planning for our highest-need students first. When you look at the weighted student formula, funding formula, it really doesn't work for small schools or schools with declining enrollment. Dozens of schools across the district experienced this and were only able to provide adequate student support services by us injecting soft landing over the last several years. And the number of those schools grew every year. So what is the transition from weighted student formula to this year's budget and eventually a reimagined school funding approach? In this transition year, we started with the baseline of what every school was given last year and then took into consideration a few factors: classroom configuration changes, that could be closures, that could be openings, that could be a change of a classroom, investments for students the school serves, really looking to see if the population changed, and for schools with increased enrollment, allowing schools to keep their hold harmless back on their general funds and other kinds of smaller investments. Overall, for the FY25 budget, we received a historic $81 million investment from the city: $81 million. This includes both general maintenance and priority investments like inclusive education. I want to thank Mayor Wu and the city for continuing to make historic investments so we can change and improve the way that we're serving our students. You know, this year, many other districts, as I talk to my counterparts in the state and nationally, they're facing much tougher budgets because they don't have the same investment and support that we do here. Mayor and I have talked at length about how if we want to truly transform schools, it will take some major investments upfront. But eventually, over time, we will create efficiencies and see improved student outcomes. This is why it's so important that we stay the course over the next several years, even when the decisions are difficult. Of the $81 million increase, $30 million has gone directly to schools with $20 million specifically for inclusive education. We learned a lot about-- We learned a lot about what was working from ESER and have moved specific programs and staff to the general fund, both school-based and centrally. We've also moved a portion of UPK off of ESER and our city trust and on to general funds along with B two collective bargaining agreements and things like that. And we have our general increased maintenance costs for things like transportation and food services, things that cost one thing a few years ago, and those costs have increased every year. Knowing we wanted to lessen the impact to schools as much as possible, we've also identified seventeen million dollars in efficiencies in, at the central office and ten million from class consolidations and grade reconfigurations. And as I hope you'll see tonight throughout the presentation, an incredible amount of thought went into how our budget aligns to our priorities and values. We're taking on big work, and as I said at the beginning, it will be hard and it'll be messy at times. But when I think about ten years in the future, if we stay the course and we make those hard decisions, keeping the students in the center, then I know we'll look back at this year and the next few to follow as some of the most pivotal moments in DPS history. At this point, it's my, my pleasure to turn this over to Dr. Chen. Uh, just a big thank you to her, to her team for all of the vision and, and work that they've done on inclusive education. Um, and she's going to share a bit more about some of our school district investments with a particular focus on inclusive education. Dr. Chen?
Thank you, Superintendent, and good evening to Chair Robinson and School Committee members. As we shared with you previously in our inclusive education plan, there is much urgency to ensure we provide inclusive opportunities for every student to access grade-level learning. Our equitable literacy work and investment in grade-level materials and professional learning lay a strong foundation to support all of our students. And now, as we turn to the FY twenty-five budget, we are beginning to make structural changes in a subset of grades, as the superintendent mentioned, district-wide, that will afford students opportunities to experience inclusive education based on flexibilities in service delivery through the inclusion planning team process, or what you'll hear me refer to as the IPT. On the next slide, uh, the heart of this effort is centering team-based planning at every school. We asked IPTs to envision how they can provide services and instruction for students that increase access to grade-level learning. The IPT work is about considering how to increase access for students within their school context. This is beyond the resources for mandated services already allocated in their school budgets. As you know, we have historically sorted and assigned students with disabilities and multilingual learners with and with, without disabilities from central office. While we may have served compliance efficiencies in that method, it resulted in unintended separation of students and limited access to grade-level learning aside, alongside peers. As the superintendent noted, these were noted in the council great cities, uh, schools reports, but we also see the impact of this through continued disparities in achievement from our outcome data. This work must be rooted in the teams closest to our students while also ensuring systems and structures that provide all families with choice and consistency in what they can expect across all of our schools. You'll see on this slide, IPTs collaborated together to establish a vision that include all of their learners, and those IPTs included a diverse set of stakeholders, including family members. This slide shows the IPT process timeline, looking at who the students are, how services and instruction could be delivered differently to be more inclusive, and how resources could be realigned. Our inclusive education coaches in each region deeply engaged with each IPT, including feedback and dialogue with teams to continue the process around realignment of resources and services to provide greater access to inclusive learning opportunity. As the superintendent referenced and we shared at the last school committee meeting, all of us in the district must shift how we have been operating to better support all of our students and make sure all students, in particular students with disabilities, multilingual learners and multilingual learners with disabilities, with and without disabilities, excuse me, have access to high-quality grade-level instruction. We know that deliver this for all students, it will look different at different schools, and school teams must be flexible and make real-time adjustments to meet the needs of their students. You can see from this slide also that there, this is an iterative process that will continue as we engage schools throughout the enrollment process. So we will do multiple checks to ensure they have the resources needed. On the next slide, um, you'll see, uh, the process for, um, the IPTs, uh, um, the allocation process. Again, we appreciate the new and challenging work IPTs have been engaged in, knowing that schools and the system at large are doing very, uh, doing very different things, uh, doing things very differently, sorry. Our regional and central teams spent time looking at how to enact inclusive education through these school plans. First, we reviewed every IPT's recommendation by regional teams co-led by our regional school superintendents and our inclusive education coaches. Then, at the central level, we saw patterns in what schools were requesting. We wanted to make sure there was an equitable process for distributing these resources. We also prioritize requests for student-facing instructional staff. Other staff requests, while important, were not prioritized. Some requests were outside of the scope of inclusive education. For instance, some requests came in outside of the implementation grade levels for this coming school year. And there are other, um, requests sometimes that reflected, um, efforts to sustain positions that may be reduced through ESER funding. Again, we know that this work is messy, it's complex, and reflects new work we are doing for which there is no playbook, but we continue to learn a number of things. Given historical funding patterns and types of programs in schools, every school has a different starting place. Another layer of learning for us is also this happening at the same time that ESER funds are sunsetting. We also continue to learn how mindset, knowledge, and capacities vary across the system, which is why we continue to prioritize providing professional learning and instructional resources. Go on to the next slide. So part of this IPT planning process involves first reviewing current resources, as the superintendent mentioned, mentioned, to utilize all the staff in the school to best serve the students in inclusive ways. Part of our district-wide context is that we have been providing resources for some schools even when enrollment decreased. As we move into the next, next fiscal year, we will also be reducing the number of classrooms needed to align to our current enrollment. Um, as the superintendent mentioned earlier, we thought it might be helpful to put into context what our current staffing ratios. So what you'll see on this slide is that, for instance, there are approximately ten students for every teacher. And then thinking about all staff in the building, that drops down to five students per staff member. As we consider strategic staffing, I want to also note that this means we have a team of educators that represent different credentials. While there is a value for teachers to hold more than one license to meet the needs of our diverse students, dependence on multiple licenses should not be considered as the first step or sole source provider to deliver services and to access grade-level learning. Let's move on to the next slide. We are prioritizing a team-based approach to instruction. For instance, every classroom has a homeroom teacher serving a diverse group of students with some complement of teachers with expertise in specially-designed instruction for students with disabilities, for instance, or ESL teachers providing explicit language development needs for multilingual learners as well as, um, multilingual learners with disabilities. For the next fiscal year, our proposed budget reflects twenty million of investments above and beyond our current maintenance budget for inclusive education. Fifteen point one billion dollars, um, in positions allocate, will be allocated through the IPT process. Again, this is beyond what is already allocated for required services for students with disabilities and multilingual learners in order to provide access to inclusive learning opportunities for all students. Two point seven million dollars are allocated for additional supports for multilingual learners with disabilities. Two point two million dollars we are holding in reserves to support positions in schools as we move through the budget and enrollment process. You'll recall from a previous slide, I mentioned this is an iterative process, and we want to make sure we have set aside funding for additional, um, allocations as needed. Again, these resources support, uh, moving to a team-based approach, not just about one homeroom teacher being responsible for all the students in a room, but educators working together in tandem. On the next slide, you'll see, um, the ten million dollars to round up to our thirty million dollar investment for school-directed investments. Six million dollars reflects increased staffing needs, including our coordinators of special education as an example, and also teachers, for example, to meet mass core implementation requirements. And then four million dollars is to support schools with increasing enrollment. So at this time, I want to turn the time over to Shira Dukovnik, who will now review our planning for FY twenty-five beyond ESER.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Um, September twenty twenty-four marks the end of ESER, and so of course, our FY twenty-five budget planning has carefully considered how to make that transition. We started, and yes, we started to prepare for the end of ESER in the previous budget season by having schools start the process of stepping down and moving, uh, positions and other expenses to ESER that they knew would be temporary and phasing out after the end of ESER. We invested fifteen million to sustain priority investments and positions that schools identified as associated to their priorities and the district priorities, including students with disabilities, multilingual learners, and there were also many investments related to equitable literacy, SEL partnerships, and other areas. So schools have been planning for the end of part of their hold harmless and have moved a, a good portion of their most critical ESER expenses to the general fund last year. We were also able to invest an additional four million, um, as Dr. Chen mentioned, to support schools that have actually seen enrollment increases since the beginning of the pandemic. Uh, in many cases, schools chose to use this additional funding to sustain part of their ESER plan or part of their hold harmless budget, and in some cases, they're using it to meet other needs associated with their increasing enrollment. We've also taken a number of steps that I'll go into more detail about to sustain what was most critical and what worked best from ESER funding that was budgeted centrally. If you go to the next slide. So this slide shows the ongoing commitments that are budgeted centrally in FY twenty-five, but that this year are currently funded on ESER. In total, eleven million dollars of investments will be moved from ESER to the central office, um, general operating budget. On the left, what you're seeing is ongoing commitments that we were able to make with new investments from the city. So the biggest area here you're seeing is capital planning and operations. Um, those are positions and programs that are accelerating our long-term facilities plans. And the second biggest area of investment is in student support personnel. So these are nurses, safe and welcoming schools coordinators um, who work on school climate and do bullying prevention. Um, positions that are budgeted centrally but are deployed to schools to directly support students. And you'll also see on there are a number of key programs that have been essential to families during the pandemic, um, including the, the family helpline and the expansion of the community hub school model. In total, that's six point four million that will be permanently on the operating budget with new investment. Uh, on the right, you're seeing an additional four point six million that we are able to sustain, um, by making trade-offs and offsets within our current budget. So four point six million and additional forty-one FTEs. And, uh, here again, the largest, uh, focus is in academics and professional, uh, professional development um, and coaching for educators, um, deployed into schools. We previewed this for the committee in December, um, but we're currently projecting about twelve to thirteen million dollars of savings from vacancies and contracts under spending, um, which actually is a lot of funding, but it represents, um, less than three percent of our total ESER budget. Uh, and we are using this to take an additional year to identify which programs are most critical, um, and were necessary to find additional offsets to move them to the general funds. Um, what you're seeing in the left column are those that would be the priority for extending um, for multiple years at a time. And I'll note that everything that's on here is, uh, non-personnel programming. We focused on moving personnel onto the general funds, um, with the investments on the previous slide. So here again, academics is the main priority, uh, the large one-time purchases of materials um, and interventions sustaining, um, programs that support inclusion planning, multilingual assessment development, and science education experiences that focus on outdoor learning. Um, the other major area of focus here are wraparound services, things that started during the pandemic, um, but that we believe families and students would benefit from at least one additional year. Um, and those include things like housing stabilization supports, um, and academic and social emotional mentorship. And then, um, finally, there, uh, as, as Dr. Chen previewed, there are, um, some some costs that we have known were only temporarily on ESER and that we have been working closely with the city to move, um, to the operating budget for next year. These include the seventeen million dollars in salary costs from our most recent collective bargaining agreement, um, and about eleven million dollars in costs for the expansion of universal pre-K, which continues to be a priority. And with that, I believe I'm turning it over to Serena LaRocque. Oh, I'm turning, pardon me, I'm turning it back.
Back to the superintendent.
It's great. Thank you so much, um, Shira. So, uh, you know, want to spend a few minutes talking about increased costs because, uh, it really is impactful to the budget. Um, you know, this, they, they are a reality, particularly with the inflation that we've had. Uh, we always strive to be as efficient as we can be, but the reality is, in many areas, it costs more today to do the same thing and to provide the same level of service than it did in previous years. Uh, this forty-four million dollars of the FY twenty-five budget proposal that serves to cover increased maintenance costs. Uh, and these are in various areas of the organization, uh, areas such as facilities, transportation, extended learning time, uh, which would also be summer, uh, and food service. Those are, those are really the ones that we've seen, uh, the, the greatest amount of increase. Um, you know, as we, even though we do have increased costs, we're really trying to look carefully at the current spending across the organization to see wherever we can find efficiencies and where we can be more cost-effective. Um, we've identified about seventeen million dollars within central budgets in cost savings. And this goes back to my point of wanting to make sure that we were able to get back to the schools as much as possible. Um, we'll go into a little bit more detail at the March fourth budget, uh, when we talk about central budgets. Uh, but the cost savings But the cost savings, to just kind of give you a sense, were identified in a couple different ways. One, we certainly looked at consolidating or eliminating any kind of vacant positions and not filling them. We also reduced duplication, we looked for and then reduced duplication of any kind of overlapping or similar programming. And then finally, we eliminated non-personnel expenses from old initiatives. And so in this way, we were able to garner that 17 million that we can then make sure our schools facing. At the school level, we looked at efficiencies through classroom consolidations, which we talked about earlier, and reconfigurations, which school committee has heard previously. You know, every year as enrollment fluctuates, we take a close look at the classrooms and we figure out where we, you know, need to both close and open classrooms. We also don't just use a one-year trend. We really try to look at the data over a course of years to see and make sure that that enrollment is actually a genuine decline. And then similarly, we sometimes have the need to open classrooms. For instance, we're seeing a tendency to have a lot more of our younger learners, our K-0s and K-1s. And so it really is kind of both open and closing. This year, represented in the budget, we've closed 68 classrooms and we're opening 16. So that gives us a net of 52 classrooms and a reduction in total of 7.4 million dollars. As part of the long-term facilities plan, we're also continuing to do that alignment where you've got the pre-K to 6 and the 712, and then in some instances, the K-8 and the 912. And that was dating back to the 2019 school committee policy. We have eight reconfigurations underway, and that impacts a total of nine schools, where the schools are either adding or removing grades. And that might be a 6 to 12 school going 712 and aligning to that structure, or that could be a K to 8 school going K to 6. Those are the types of configurations when we talk about grade reconfiguration. And at the last school committee meeting, you voted on the merger of UpAustin and UpDorchester. On the next couple of slides, they just show how that consolidation and what it yielded, both for the school, students, and the budget. So, you know, on this slide, you're going to see a visual display of grades 6 to 8 at UpAustin and UpDorchester. In UpAustin, it's currently a middle school serving grades 6 to 8, and at UpDorchester, it's a K to 8 school, to just give the context. UpAustin has three strands of general education classrooms and a substantially separate strand with two multi-grade classrooms. UpDorchester has two classroom strands, and it has a third classroom in the sixth grade. You can see in the gray-colored boxes representing classrooms where the school did not have enough students enrolled to actually fill out the classrooms. So by combining UpAustin and UpDorchester, we were able to reduce seven classrooms, resulting in a 1.2 million dollar cost savings. We were also able to make fuller classrooms in a fuller school where students could really experience what those middle grades are like. This is just one example, right, of where enrollment and strategic consolidation can mean fuller services for students and cost savings to impact all students. At this point, I'm going to turn it back over to our budget director, Serena, who was on earlier, to just provide some additional data relative to the BPS budget.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So the mayor has been a partner and committed to providing us with a strong budget allocation. Last year, the city saw increased, last year the city increased our appropriation nearly by 5%. And once again, this year in committing 81 million additional funding with increased maintenance costs and investments. City is providing additional funding with an eye toward inclusive education. Although we have received this unprecedented funding from the city, we do want to emphasize that we know that we cannot continue to grow at this rate and need to identify efficiencies, as superintendent previously mentioned. We're doing this by looking at what can be our central office and school efficiencies. So for example, she mentioned looking at duplication of overlapping similar programings at Central, prioritizing our initiatives in Central, then also at schools. She briefly mentioned classroom consolidations, reconfigurations, and then our long-term facilities plan. So the total BPS enrollment has decreased by about 8,000 students or 14% over the last seven years, but the decline has slowed over the last two years. Enrollment declined by 270 students heading into this year and 545 students the prior year, as compared to the prior year, four-year average of 1,635 students per year. We are seeing that enrollment has started to stabilize as the number of new multilingual learners entering the district has returned to pre-pandemic levels, a trend that is continuing this year. As a district, we have resources to be able to give students what they need. There's been a 46% increase in per pupil spending over the last five years. Please note that this does not include ESER dollars. We're mainly focusing on general fund investments for this particular slide. Next slide. So in FY24, we have 262 million on general funds and 13 million on ESER with a total of 275. Sorry, in FY25, my apologies. While this is a decrease from FY24 of 76 million, this decrease is due to the end of ESER. As Shira highlighted earlier in the presentation, we have been actively preparing for the end of ESER. In addition, we as a district have been in a fortunate position relative to the national landscape, again, thanks to the investment from the cities that has helped offset the impact of the ESER fiscal cliff. Also, there is a beneficial overlap between our FY25, beginning of our FY25 budget and the end of ESER on September 30, 2024. So this alignment, as Shira emphasized on Slide 19, enables us to leverage unspent funds from FY24 to offset some of one-time costs and extend programming, giving us an additional year as we continue to prioritize what we will fund as a district's longer term. So we have a student-first budget. As you can see, if we zoom out to our entire budget across all funds, we're seeing that 94% of our BPS budget goes to student services. And so this includes direct expenses, which is the school budgets. It includes school services budgeted centrally, such as our regional support model or special education services, such as compensatory services. It also includes the non-BPS student services. So examples of that would be the transportation that we're legally required to provide non-BPS students. And then 6% of our entire budget is then the central admin. And so this would include things like our helplines for family, OHC supports to schools, and other central services. It includes things such as our equity supports, which would include some follow-up on some complaints. And so that makes up 6% of our budget. And if you go to the next slide, please. So we know that this is at a high level, and there's a lot of detailed information needed. And so we are providing extensive information available that will be available online. And that would include tonight's budget presentation, the allocation overview that has the school-by-school comparison, allocation summaries for all schools, FY25 preliminary general fund account code. And then note that all of these documents will be translated. So if you just want to take a look later on, you'll find it on our budget website coming soon. So now I'm going to pass it over for some questions, or open the floor for questions, rather.
Actually, Chair, I just want to publicly thank Serena LaRocque, who is our budget director, and also Shira, who you heard from earlier, who's a director of state and federal programs. This is, this was baptism by fire with our interim CFO being on paternity leave. And both of them have stepped up incredibly to do such a wonderful job responding to our school leaders and to our school communities with any questions and to all of us at Central. So I just want to publicly acknowledge both of them.
Yes. Thank you. And I also just want to thank the entire finance team for your tireless work to get this to this point for us. Thank you. Start, Mr. Cardet Hernandez.
I'm going to try to go fast because the clock is ticking, but thank you so much for the presentation. I guess I'll start sort of high level with, one, a disclaimer. We haven't seen school-by-school budgets, so we're not, you know, that's not our conversation for today. But high level, I guess, before we even look at that, you know, the previous funding formula, and I think this was like a national trend, was to sort of drive out corruption that often happened in school districts, right? Where it was incredibly political around what schools got what resources, who you knew, who had the loudest voices, what communities could advocate. My fear, and I've said this to you, Superintendent, my fear in this process is like we're just going back to a system that didn't work, even if the current system wasn't working either. And arguably, the current system also wasn't working because we were allowing schools to not be full and that making the hard decisions around what happens when a school's not full and we hold them harmless and sort of perpetuating. So I guess I'm just wondering, it still isn't clear like what the rules are. And I think this translates even to the IPT teams, like it can't, maybe it is, but like, what are the rules for determining what a school gets and doesn't get? And who gets what and who doesn't? And I think this runs across both processes.
Yeah, right. So I think like on the first part of the question, and Dr. Chen can weigh in on the second part. But on the first part, you know, what we laid out is with the reimagining funding, our goal is to be transparent and it is to be able to say that each of the schools is getting X, Y, and Z. And that's coming from a set of recommendations that's been a process. We're in this transition budget. And so I think as we laid out, and Serena can identify the slide, we kind of laid out what is being included. So we started with weighted student formula. But as to your point, if a school had declining enrollment, that didn't necessarily fund them in the way they needed to. So then we considered class configurations. We considered the particular type of classrooms and learners that might be in those classrooms, you know, as a way to be able to ensure schools had what they needed. So every school had that applied to them as a rule base. And Serena, you can provide the slide number. I think your question on the IPT side, Dr. Chen, do you want to just kind of give a 30 seconds on this in terms of the team's approach?
I'll try. 30 seconds. Thank you, school committee member, Cardet Hernandez, for a very important and complicated question, which is we are transitioning from a weighted student funding formula to one that can meet the needs of students in the IPT process. Just want to reiterate, schools have already been funded for required services. The IPT process is about, okay, what are the flexibilities that you need to increase access to grade-level learning or least restrictive environment for students with disabilities? So the idea is based on their current configuration. So some schools vary, right? We have some schools that already serve as inclusion schools. They were funded in a different way than schools that maybe didn't have that same model of teaching. So we're trying to make sure to right-size on what are they proposing as a way they're going to configure their classes to provide those inclusive opportunities. And then went through that process to figure out, okay, could like another 0.5 or another 1.0 help them create some of those flexibilities? So varied from school to school, to just be direct about it. I know it doesn't help give you a school-by-school budget situation, but those were some of the considerations that we were looking at in terms of allocations.
Yeah. Is it? Yeah, I guess that, I mean, that sums up the question. It's still hard. You will then have folks saying that it wasn't fair and without like the clarity around what rules were used to define. And I think this goes back even to the earlier process, like even what our structural expectations were for the planning process around special education reform. I guess I'm just worried like it won't feel fair and we, I'm not sure how we say it was, if it's, if they're just decisions made centrally around what gets greenlit. You know what I mean? Without like a clear standard operating procedure.
Right. So I think, I think I'll just chime in on this, but I do think it was a, it wasn't just a pass it over and here's the decision. I think what's missing in this is the actual active dialogue that was happening with the IPT team, with the school leader, and then certainly with the other team. Because every school, to Linda's point, the challenge is they're all starting at different places. So we can't really have one particular way to approach it because that would put some schools further ahead and other schools very drastically behind. I think instead, what the, what the central team was attempting to do was to find out kind of where the, where the school currently was and what it had, and then what the IPT team was believing would sort of allow them to move toward the team teaching model. So, yeah, I mean, I think when we get to the reimagining funding as a full-blown system, that will, I think, feel for everyone, just a much more guaranteed kind of rules-based. But for this year being a transition, this was, I think, what we thought would bring the greatest level of equity to the schools.
Yeah. The, I guess. Yeah, okay. I think that's the answer. Just one more follow-up question, separate. The enrollment projections for next year are what? And I just, that didn't feel as clear to me. And then I think at the same time, maybe you can answer. Last year, we were holding, we gave 60 million dollars to holding schools harmless. Are we still looking at the numbers in that way since we're building still off of the existing formula? And then what would that spend actually be this year?
Right. So Jamie, do you mind just coming on and giving the exact amount of the enrollment? And then Serena, I think you can just share what the Hold Harmless ended up being.
Sure. Good evening. So for the projected enrollment, I think we can share in follow-up detail the numbers year to year, so you can track it more closely. But I think the information or the key point that would translate out from that is we are expecting enrollment to continue to decline, but at lower levels and starting to flatten out. So we're estimating that enrollment will decline by 100 to 150 students next year. And again, we can provide the detailed projections to projections comparison and walk you through how that translates.
Yeah. Because last, and maybe it's just a different way of thinking about it. Last year, when we started this budget process, it was rooted around projections. So we understood sort of school-based spending. So, yeah, I think it's just like an important way for us to think about it. Or maybe it's not, given that the funding formula is changing. I don't know.
Well, I was going to say, yeah, I think we can provide that information so you can do a little bit of an apples-to-apples because that's how we tend to have historically talked about it. But you're exactly right, because the funding formula has changed, what those projection numbers mean, it doesn't translate to budget in the same way this year. But still, we'll provide that information.
Yeah. And remember, Cardet Hernandez, I think the other thing we pointed to last time that we should reinforce is we are seeing increases in our multilingual learners that are a trend that we're not sure how that continues.
Yeah.
Does that continue as an increase and balance things off? Does that not? So I think there is some unpredictability, in essence, about what happens with that particular population of our students.
And then to answer your question on Hold Harmless, it's the Hold Harmless on general funds, it was about cut in half. So it's 30.6 million. And then we did do an additional ESER to hold harmless if they saw enrollment increases. And that's a separate bucket, and that was about 4 million. So a total of 34.6 million, if you were to then add those two numbers together.
Yeah. So we're really talking about 26 million in schools. So, so we're really talking about twenty six million in school based cuts.
Hmm, for the hold harmless?
Well, I guess, right? Because if you were at sixty million last year.
Yep.
And so, right?
Yeah, I think that's right. I think the
Yeah.
I think the other thing is to show the schism, but um, we had sixty schools with increased enrollment. Right? So it wasn't like a small pocket of schools. You actually saw now, again, it ranged the number of students, but nonetheless, you know, that was a a healthy chunk of schools.
But increased enrollment to bring them to capacity or just increased enrollment and we're still holding harmless because they're under enrolled?
Yeah, they're still likely, Jamie, you can, you can go further, but they're likely under enrolled. However, they are increasing enrollment.
Yeah. Um, I am a hundred percent out of time, so I will stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Polanco Garcia.
Thank you, Madancha, and thank you, uh, everyone for the report. Uh, yo tengo una confusión con relación a la cantidad que están estableciendo para la la pr- las prácticas inclusivas, para la implementación de los programas inclusivos, eh, de los estudiantes con discapacidad multilingüe.
Um, so I have a question or I have confusion uh, with with respect to the amount of money that you are allocating for the implementation of the inclusion plan, especially for the English language learners with disability.
El año pasado habían dicho que iban a invertir cincuenta millones. Y cuando veo las vías positivas y la presentación veo que solo están estableciendo veinte. Alguien me puede explicar, me pueden explicar con mayor claridad para poder entender por qué está baja, si eran cincuenta millones ahora son veinte.
So uh, what I remember from last year was that there was an investment of, oh, we're planning to invest fifty million dollars. But then, when I saw the slide deck or the slides and I saw that it went down. So in December, they said it was twenty, it was fifty million. And then now I'm seeing twenty million. So can someone please explain and provide more clarity why this decrease?
Sure. Um, so uh, Member Polanco Garcia, the fifty million was a a figure that had been discussed with the city collectively, like fifty million for inclusive education. But that was over multiple years. Last year, we had ten million that uh, sorry, fifteen million that was allocated relative to inclusive ed. And this year, you're seeing uh, twenty million, sorry, ten and twenty. Uh, but the fifty million was over the course of time. It wasn't in a particular budget year.
Cuántos años? How many year?
We, we talked about the implementation over five years. So as it is, we had to cut additional dollars like in Central in order to give more monies toward inclusive ed.
Wow. Um, esta es el principio de muchas conversaciones que vamos a tener sobre el presupuesto y yo quiero preguntarle con relación al equipo EPTI que ha estado, que ya le contestó al distrito sobre los planes de inclusión.
Uh, so we will have a lot of conversations about the budget. This is just the beginning of it. Um, and now with respect to the um, the inclusive team, the EPT, um, you know how they each team from each school have answer to all of the questions to the district.
Para poder tener un mejor entendimiento de este mito de vista, a mí me gustaría tener como miembro del comité escolar, qué respondieron, qué dijeron el equipo que ellos establecieron en lo que ellos necesitaban para hacer un buen plan de inclusión y saber que de cada uno, verdad, qué dijeron, qué dijo el distrito, cuál fue la contestación que hizo el distrito. Me gustaría tener esto para yo poder tener un mejor entendimiento.
Um, so from my understanding and my own perspective, um, as a member of the committee, I would like to know that what kind of answers did the district gave to uh, the requests of these different teams, especially about the plan of um, inclusive education. So I would like to know what were the answers so I can better understand and inform myself as a member of the committee.
Great. Dr. Chen, do you want to give a like a couple of examples, um, just of the type of feedback that would be given? Ranging on what the what what the current state was at the school?
Yes, so I I first want to um, give our coaches a a big uh, shout out for gratitude. They have been working side by side with every school's IPT and going back and forth and helping to them understand. So when I shared earlier, um, there were of, there was a wide variety of requests that came in around IPT allocations. Um, so for instance, there were some schools who really saw value in um, family, um, like a family um liaison, and they wanted another one to sort of help families. While of course, that would be a great idea and we we don't disagree with that. We also really focused on what are direct services to students to prioritize that so that we could make sure we can do that across schools. So for instance, in classes where um, there was already a substantially separate strand in um, special education and then one that was historically general education and one that was maybe SCI. What we did was looked at, do they already have some existing staff that could provide the additional supports alongside the homeroom teachers that were already assigned? And in cases where that wasn't available, we provided additional supports. So in those homerooms, they're already getting the services that are required. But we knew to provide more inclusive opportunities, for instance, maybe there are some partial inclusion opportunities. In addition to a homeroom teacher, there might be a special educator for two to three periods a day that might be supporting now that class that was a general education class, for instance. So those were the types of things that we considered. And as you all know, we have so many different configurations of schools. So we really looked at um, and I give the IPT such huge gratitude as well because they had to look at what are those existing resources in the schools? And that level of close look at resources is not necessarily something teams are accustomed to having, down to like, how do we service individual students? So that's how we made some decisions and it was not easy. It was trying to make sure that we could provide everyone with just enough. Sometimes in some cases, as we re review them, um, some schools might have a little bit more wiggle room than other schools based on the allocations. The other thing I would also say is in some of these grades, um, the reason why we set aside some additional funding is that as we make ourselves, we make our way through the choice process and students are assigned to schools where schools can actually see who are the students coming to me, what's on their IEPs? Um, even for students without IEPs, how do we provide those additional surfer services? And also our multilingual learners. So we want to make sure that once schools know which students are coming to them for the fall, we have the opportunity to make additional adjustments as needed, so schools can provide that flexibility in access to more inclusive settings.
Sí, pero tomando en cuenta que, tomando en cuenta que la proyección es que los estudiantes multilingüe van a crecer. Entonces, qué qué debemos pensar, verdad? Cómo darle esos servicios a esos estudiantes?
Yes, but we need to take into account the projection of English language learners that it will keep growing. So we need to think about how to kind of services and what kind of services we're gonna keep providing to them.
Y cada escuela tiene su propia realidad y yo estoy, yo pienso como estudiante, como mamá y como maestro. Le estamos poniendo muchas cargas a nuestros maestros. Vamos a tener suficiente maestro bilingüe contratado con la proyección que está tirando el presupuesto. Entonces, este este maestro, cómo lo retengo? El maestro se desencanta y se frustra porque mucha presión para él.
Yes, but each school has a different need and different reality. So just thinking, you know, from the parent's perspective, from educator perspective, from a student perspective. This is a lot, but this is putting a lot of pressure on the teachers, on the educators. Because this means that we need more bilingual educators. And and look at the budget, we're not have have enough budget for that. And then all of this weight falls onto the educators and then they feel frustrated and they get discouraged.
A mí definitivamente esta es una conversación que debemos continuar y en progreso. Alright.
This is definitely an ongoing conversation that we need to push and we need to have.
I think one thing um, I just wanted to point out um, to Member Polanco Garcia. So the twenty million investment is all directed toward special education and ESL supports. Right? That is not other teaching positions, it's specifically for those positions. And then additionally, um, we're providing lots of pipeline opportunities for uh, paraprofessionals to become teachers, bilingual teachers, to really increase the amount of bilingual staff we have available in our schools. Same with social workers. So you're right, the need for bilingual staff is growing really quickly and we have to meet that need in multiple ways. But the vast majority of our investment dollars are being put toward special education and our multilingual learner staffing in the form of teachers uh, and other supports.
Thank you. Una última pregunta es en la lámina diecinueve, en el slide diecinueve. Eh, del lado, estoy viendo que del lado derecho hablan de extender los programas o varios, por varios años. Y del del lado, del lado izquierdo, del lado derecho hablan de comprar una sola vez, en la lámina diecinueve, si pueden verla. Entonces, me me puso nerviosa cuando veo que dicen, okay, I heard interpreted, sorry.
No, sigue, sigue. Okay, so, yeah, if you can take a look at the slide nineteen. See what you have in um, the left column and then the right and on the left. Talking about the extended program.
Y hay una parte que dice comprar una sola vez y veo que hablan de ochocientos mil calidad del aire en el in- en el interior y suministro. Like, quiero poder entender cómo vamos a comprar una sola vez en el presupuesto del año fiscal inversiones estratégicas. Entonces, habla en de esta manera de comprar una sola vez. Y esto me preocupa porque no, la calidad del aire, el interior y el suministro, esto no se puede comprar una sola vez por nuestros estudiantes y nuestros maestros.
So for example, if you look at the one time only purchases and you see down there, what do you say you're allocating eight hundred K for indoor quality supplies? And what do you mean one time only purchases? That makes me nervous. I get concerned because we need to, this is not just a one time purchase um, that we need to provide for our students.
That's great. That's a great question. Sher, can you just explain how you have those labels?
Yeah, that, um, I think that there's a, there's a couple of pieces there. One is those supplies, as I understand it, are ones that we are buying for multiple uh, for an extended timeframe in advance. It's not just the supplies that we need for that year. It's also only, I believe, a sm- a very small fraction of the total cost of sustaining our indoor air quality work. Um, and there's been an effort over multiple years to build some of those expenses that were front loaded, particularly in the first two years of Esser into our general fund budget. So I I wouldn't read that as um, this is the last year for indoor air quality purchasing. And I see um, I see Teresa's on. If you want to share more, Teresa, I'll pass it to you.
Or just to clarify, uh, the funds that we
Oh, you're on mute, Teresa.
Can you hear me now? Okay, great. Um, what we use for Ezra funds were that initial investment for the indoor air quality sensors. And then the ongoing program is now moving into our operational budget. So that was the initial investment to get us started, to get all the program and all the websites acclimated. And now we're moving into the sustaining part of it. So that is not a one time only um, investment that we've made.
The other, um, the other point, um, Member Polanco Garcia, I wanted to make. So in addition to the support for multilingual learners as part of the inclusive ed and the the twenty million, there's a part of that that is for our multilingual learners with disabilities. And that is to ensure that they get their English language supports. So that is a a deep investment so that we make sure uh, in their schedule, we can add the resource in. I think that's on page.
No, muy brevemente ya porque sé que mi tiempo terminó. No vi tampoco uh, en la presentación una partida para la implementación de programas del idioma nativo. Y esto me preocupa también.
Okay, I know that I might, I run it out of time, but um, very briefly. I didn't see in the presentation or on the slide there um, any amount assigned for implementation of the use of native language or or teaching in native languages. I didn't see any there.
Linda, uh, Dr. Chen, do you just want to talk about the work we're doing uh, with our newcomer programming? Uh, in increased access to native language?
Sure, we'll certainly be able to delineate more of these investments and strategies in the central office um, presentation. I know this was very high level, um, but we are certainly currently um, involved in applications to the state around bilingual programs. In addition to that, our team in O M M E is also working on um, resources and professional learning to provide teachers um, for um, using native language as a resource. Um, even if they're not in a bilingual classroom, such as a transitional bilingual or dual language, which requires uh, an approved application to the state. So we're happy to provide more details during the central office um, investments and delineate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna move on to Mr. Meta. And again, reminding members, I know you've got incredibly a lot of questions. Um, the five minute presentations have all been about fifteen minutes so far. So I know we're using up a lot of time for tonight. So I'm gonna urge you all to please get all of your questions in writing so we can get them over to the district to be able, to be able to give us more focused information with regard to some of the deep dives you want to do for the next couple of meetings. So, thank you. Uh, Mr. Meta?
Uh, yeah, um, so just real quickly, um, I was wondering uh, if you could give me an estimate on total number of positions that'll be lost? Um, and when those people will know uh, that they're likely not gonna have a position next year? Or if those people know already?
So we're still doing, um, uh, Mr. Meta, we are still doing our central budget process. Uh, so during the school based, we will talk about the FTEs and then during the central budget, we'll talk about the FTEs. But we're still in process with the central budgets.
Is that it? Okay. Mr. Cardet Hernandez, I'm sorry, I'm gonna go to Mr. O'Neil and then give you another five minutes, Mr. Card. Mr. Carden Hernandez, I'm going to go to Mr. O'Neal and then give you another five minutes, Mr. Carden Hernandez. So go ahead, Mr. O'Neal.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Superintendent and Chief Chen for the presentation. And Ms. Dukovnik and Ms. LaRocque, thank you for stepping up and nice to meet you virtually. And congratulations, obviously, to Chief Bloom as well for the birth of their child. That was nice to hear. So wish him and his family well. And, you know, I know this is the beginning of a two-month process. So I will hold most of my questions because there's still a lot more information to come, particularly as we get to the individual schools. You know, as I said, it's a two-month process with the individual hearings coming up. Just a couple of quick comments because it was brought up earlier about weighted student funding formula. And I recall when it was introduced and it did expose a lot of inequities in the system. Huge inequities of favored schools that knew how to work it and were getting a lot that they really shouldn't have been getting. And, you know, we went through several years of trying to have soft landings for them. And then our soft landings have shifted to the schools that quite frankly were under-enrolled and weighted student funding wouldn't get them the numbers. So now it was allowing them to still have a school secretary or assistant principal, that type of thing, and delayed hard decision-making. So I'm glad we're moving to the point of, you know, doing what we should be doing. And we still have to make sure that the fairness is in there and that we don't slip back to a system that the school that is the best connected gets the funding and schools that don't, that aren't, don't. And so how we balance that is going to be interesting, but I'm glad to see that classroom consolidation work. I think that is, you know, has been ripe to do. And I'm glad to see that number and the helpful example of up Boston and up Dorchester and seeing the two charts of here's where they were and then here's what they will be. That really helped explained it and to see that it's now what fifty classrooms overall were consolidated on, which is a much less impact on a community than closing a school. And so appreciate that work. I also appreciate the work of the school leaders that, you know, were thoughtful in how they utilized ESSER. And you think of like East Boston High School and, you know, Mr. Branger Forti there, who did not put any positions on ESSER because he knew it was going to be gone in a couple of years, right? And so we have some real great experience school leaders across the district. And hopefully, we're still asking them to help those who were new to the position or inherited decisions made by another school leader before them. And I know it is evolving about what the ultimate impact is going to be because there are a bunch of open positions in the district and someone's position may be eliminated by ESSER, but they may perfectly fit for another open position. So I think the net effect because of this planning is going to be small, although I'm sure some of the press will focus on the gross numbers. But I look forward to seeing that in the future. I do, I just, I'll stop at that. I'm going to have a whole bunch of questions, but this, as I said, this is an evolving process. So I look forward to seeing the individual school budgets and seeing the net effect of some of these changes. But I appreciate the thoughtful approach to it.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Mr. Carden Hernandez, do you have one question to ask at this time and the others you'll put into writing?
Here's what I'll say respectfully, Chair. I have more than one question to ask and I do think this is the time to ask it. And I think the spanking to us as committee members is like a little bit frustrating. I'm saying it with respect. But like, if the presentation elicits more questions, this is the place to do it when we're talking about a billion-dollar budget. So I will do my best to do it quickly, but I do have more than one question about what is, what like we're here to talk about. And so I'm going to try to go fast, but-
Yeah, I understand that. But we've been asking people because this is the first one, to please do the most important ones right now, but to please put all of the rest of them in writing so that we can make sure we have all of the right answers for you, for the folks who are trying to do this work. That's it. I'm not asking you not to ask your questions. I'm just asking you to help us, you know, make it work for the staff who are going to be working to get these because our next meeting is next week. So they could quickly turn the answers around. So yes, go ahead.
I will put additional questions in writing. I want to understand, just at a baseline, something, Superintendent. If I'm getting this right and this will formulate other questions later, this is also why we ask questions because they create other questions. The way that this process went then is for schools specifically. Schools who then were at, we used the fair student funding formula as a baseline. So schools who are at capacity will see no reduction. And then schools who were receiving, who were receiving hold harmless funding are the only schools being cut. And then those were the conversations of how much of that hold harmless funding you needed. Is that like a fair understanding?
I mean, I think that's a general understanding. Serena, do you want to walk through, like, just very high level? Like, one or like a situation in which the enrollment stayed the same or increased and one in which the enrollment declined? We'll get into this, obviously, at the school budget hearing, you know, more in depth, but-
I guess, yeah, and if this isn't the time and you want to wait, I think what you'll get at the, I'm just nervous, I think, to Vice Chair O'Neill's point of like going back to it being a system about adult relationships. Where like who you know, how long you've been in the system is going to influence how much you're able to negotiate in that conversation around what your need is. And for you to even have the lexicon of the system to create compelling arguments around need. Since there's, I'm not getting like the sort of rules of who, what you're negotiating against. You know what I mean?
So I think in general with weighted student formula and how the declining enrollment really offset how weighted student formula could use, that actually was much more susceptible in past years where you could then advocate, if you had a declining enrollment, you could advocate through a variety of ways. And so it became much less predictable as weighted student formula had intended to be. I think what we tried to do this year was to use weighted student formula as the kind of baseline and then take three different sets of conditions for all schools after that. There was a slice of schools that fell into the last condition, which was that they had an increased enrollment. And for them, we did allow hold harmless funds because their enrollment was increasing and there was no other way to account for that. But other than that, everybody went through the same four steps. That's how leaders understood it and that's how the budget team approached it. Serena, do you want to just kind of walk through an example?
I was hoping to do an example, the two examples next presentation. I don't have off the top of my head.
Okay.
Superintendent, if I can just try to synthesize this in a quick overview. With weighted student funding, the gist was always, and Chairman O'Neill can attest to this, with weighted student funding, there was always an equilibrium point with weighted student funding where if you had the right enrollment, you were able to cover all your costs and expenses. With increased enrollment, you had extra dollars to spend on different types of programs initiative. But once you went below that equilibrium point, that's when a soft landing set in and that's where a lot of our schools tended to get and with the declining enrollment, more and more schools fall in that category.
Yeah, and I mean, and this predates me and a lot of folks in this room, but some folks who are still in this room. We also then didn't make the hard decisions around consolidating schools so that we could fund the system with the formula we created to fund the system. So like, we're, you know, like, everyone's responsible for, we're all holding the bag of-
So the reimagining school funding was launched, I believe, a year and a half ago as a, like, kind of by Chief Cooter at the time, sort of seeing that this was where we were headed. So we were, I think some of the principles that we're using in this budget do reflect that, but not all. Because some of them actually make a recommendation specific to, you know, a particular kind of position and making sure that every school has that kind of position, for example. So there were some that will be enacted in the FY twenty-six, but we could not do that in this one. We're also kind of caught between, you know, the school quality guarantee that was issued several years ago, which eats up quite a bit of the budget. So it's sort of like, but we're in mid, we're in the end part of implementation with that. So you can't very well kind of stop that midstream for the schools that have been waiting for that. So that's why we're saying this is a transition budget in the sense that we're moving from one formula to another way of doing it, but with all the sensitivity of working with the communities to make sure that things don't get, because of advocacy, things don't get given to this community and not to that. I will say that, as I said to the leaders, and we sometimes fail to recognize this in BPS, this is a zero-sum game when it comes to our schools. If something goes to one school, it comes from another in one way, shape or form. We are one district. And the sooner we recognize we're one district and not a hundred and nineteen schools, our budget will work better for our children.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely. And make consolidation plans, that much easier.
Thank you.
And I just have, that was, that was one question. The-
Your time. Be fair.
Okay. I think, I think so. Listen, if we don't want to know it and we don't think it matters-
I've said there's a way of doing it. I'm just, I'm trying to hold this all accountable to each other. That's it. We ask that you put things in writing and we'll get the answer. That's all.
Okay. All right.
And Chantel has got her hand raised and would like to turn. So if you've got more, please put it in writing. Thank you, Ms. Lima Barbosa.
Thank you, Chair. I know it's always, budget season is always very stressful and overwhelming and asking questions during this type of formatting sometimes is not enough, is not enough time. So I totally, totally get what Brendan is going through right now. I sort of want to hold my big questions so when I do see key departments, key units, key chiefs, especially when it comes to specific schools. I know just today we've heard a lot in the public comment about specific school budgets, specific cuts. I think today I saw a little bit of an overview of why some of that is happening when we think about congregation of classrooms, when we think about the Green New Deal, mergers of schools, et cetera, et cetera. I guess for me it's really more of just like offering the district some tips of when coming to the following budget hearings to really come with specific examples of showcasing why schools like the Condon might be feeling, you know, that these cuts are going to impact and is going to have an impact, but really have them understand if it's a congregation of classroom, if it's a merger, whatever it is, like to come with that already in the presentation instead of us having to hear folks again, sorry, working for- doom here, instead of us continuing to hear the questions, but folks are not really answering them directly. I think it's more intentional if folks actually come prepared during the presentations to sort of start addressing some of those concerns, some of that anxiety. So that is one of them. I just want to, Superintendent, go back to just really, you know, give a shout out to the budget team. It's pretty stressful of, you know, losing Chief Nathan hasn't a lot of work. And I know this is a crucial time for everybody to be ready to come to committee and hear and listen to these very important questions. I, for one, that's been on somewhat participating budget hearings in the past. What I do encourage my colleagues and the other members of the committee is to take some time to try to talk to folks one-on-one as we are coming to the committee meetings because the committee meeting is not enough. There's a lot of us, we all have questions, we all have different things that we're interested in. So maybe taking a little bit of time of meeting with Serena, the superintendent, going to schools like, Member Polanco García has mentioned, I've been going to schools. And I'll tell you that seeing the facilities has been quite like concerning.
Yeah.
Because I'm like, wow, we're still talking about it, but there's like literally schools where I walked in and the halls looked like they were an inventory and not a hall. Where buildings are so old that there's only like one bathroom in the basement. And some of them are schools where it's kindergartens, right, or little young kids. So I'm hearing the chair, I'm hearing Ms. Polanco García and Vice Chair O'Neill about being a little bit more on the grounds because truly just having this type of conversation or dialogue here is not enough. And having to dig in into the budget, the numbers, even for us, like, we don't have staff. We don't have an assistant budget director like some other folks have when it comes to the budget. So it's a lot even for us committee members to come and fully be prepared. And we hope that the district understand that these questions are coming from a place of like, we want clarity, we want to understand it and not to just put people on the spot, just to put people on the spot. So I hear my colleagues, like, we want to have this conversation here. But I'm pushing myself to also try to do that a little bit more outside of the chambers. As you all know, anything that has to do with multilingual learners, that's where a lot of my questions are going to come. To Dr. Chen, of course, really interested to hear more about the Green New Deal. What does that look like for the next fiscal year? What is this budget doing about that? And then looking at the examples of schools where they're seeing a huge cut and they're freaking out. So we need to clarify to them what is going on and how, you know, we're going to still be supporting them through that transition. Because there's a lot going on, a lot of new ideas and proposals. And budget season sometimes gets underway of things as much as it's an important process that it is. So just comments for today, looking forward for the next conversations that we'll have with y'all. Serena, looking forward to hopefully meeting with you, but I know you're also very busy during this time, but happy to talk to whoever in the district that can make a little bit of time for us outside of the chamber during this very, very busy season for y'all. Thank you.
So absolutely, Chair. May I just respond?
Yes, please.
First of all, really appreciate all those comments. We are here at disposal to be able to support in whatever way we can, whether that's in writing, whether that's meeting, however, what is best for members. We're here because the budget is a bear and to understand it, particularly if you're going through it for the first couple of times and understand its totality, it can be very confusing. So anything we can do to help support, please call on us. I think, you know, you're right, Membo Lima Barbosa, which is, the budget is emotional. It's emotional for folks and it's emotional because it is values and it is attached to people and things and resources that everybody wants to be able to give the most for. And so I think, you know, we will do our best that as communities have questions or concerns to address those, not just in school committee, but also outside of school committee to support. I think one of the themes I see happening for schools is around the classroom consolidations where they're losing classrooms and so they have less expense, right? Because they've lost classrooms and that means that there is often a shrinkage of positions because there's fewer students to support, fewer classrooms. And so when they see the number, they see a number that includes those classroom reductions. And then they panic that that's the number. What it actually is, is taking that classroom offline. And I'm not minimizing taking the classroom offline because that may have been an educator that had been there for a long time or a way that schools went about things. But we've shown kind of, we can't keep stretching across all of these half-filled classrooms. By doing that, we're actually, we're not able to give students in the other classrooms what they need or in the half-empty classrooms. So we're at a point where we have to do as a district that consolidation and as schools that consolidation. But that is, that's hard. It's emotional and it's hard. And we'll always work respectfully and try the best we can to explain it and then to work with anyone that's impacted through it. So if also as school committee members, as you go out to schools or if you hear from a school, we're happy to then reach out. At day's end, there are trade-offs that every school budget makes. And the reason we structure this in three sessions is because the first one's to give an overview. It's just to give the idea of the budget, the value system, the approach, the strategy. It's in the next two budgets that you're going to go much deeper as to how we're applying those. So the first one is those schools' budget. And that is the one that, you know, for all, for many, many reasons, is super emotional. The central office is also emotional in a different way, but it is, it's a different conversation because it's usually around many programs that impact schools. And so it still has that school touch, but they're not based at the- And so it still has that school touch, but they're not based at the school. But each of those deserves a deep conversation and it often can't just be in the one school committee meeting. So that's why we'll offer as much time as needed to help with that understanding between now and those hearings.
Uh sure, real quick, just a, a follow-up common question. Um. So one of the things that I wanted to touch upon when we think about these class configurations. And how they're going to be impacting the elimination of classrooms, uh teachers are not gonna have classrooms, so. Really emphasizing on how you all are helping these uh staff that are losing their job scoring quo. Uh what other opportunities are in the district? I think as we are making these cuts, but also adding more funding to departments like Alana, like I mentioned, that. That is supporting one of the most vulnerable staff in the district is a way to show like, hey. We're, you know, margin schools, we're doing class configurations, but we're offering the professional development, the emotional support, even like. Activities that has nothing to do with work, because what I, what you build is community and trust. And spaces where we can have real conversations, that doesn't always have to be just during budget season either, right? So giving just one example, but as we are making cuts that are creating a little bit of like uncertainty. Is showing that there are other ways in the budget that we are trying to make sure that we're retaining these talents. And that we're really amplifying the other opportunities that are in the district. So just wanted to emphasize that.
That's right. And I think, you know, as you'll hear in the schools budget, you know, Chief Canty and her staff. Are really aimed at it not so much uh losing a job, but it's really about. How can we work to either gain new skills or apply skills in a different role? And so our goal always when we have uh BPS staff is we, it's a BPS family. We wanna help develop, we wanna help get folks into other kinds of positions if that position isn't there. Uh so to your point, I think we'll talk more about that at the schools budget. But Chief Canty and OHC are like lock and step to make sure that this is people first.
Thank you, Shu, thank you, Chair.
Ms. Polanco Garcia, I see your hand is raised again. You have another question.
Uh I wanna say something coming. Uh I wanna say um everyone, the. The budget is very important for the student, for the teacher, for the community. For me, I wanna try speak English more because I need you understand exactly what happened. Yeah, I need you. Every, every, everyone understand my, my comment, understand my sentences. And then every Tuesday, I have a special meeting with Megan, Jerry Robbins, so. Appreciate that the time you spend with me. Uh appreciate that a lot. I think uh in next Tuesday, um Megan and the team. I have a lot of question, I have a lot of question. Then thank you for that time. I think it's important if we, if you each commi- com- committee member. From meeting, provide meeting with the team, because if you, each community, community member. Talk to the team, the superintendent team, the jury, you know, it's important because it's more clarified. But, but my promise is I wanna try in English because I need you, my representation. I represent the multilingual, the multilingual uh per- person, people, right? But I need you, when I go to the school, I need you, I need you to speak English. Because sometime the principal no speak Spanish, so I need you. It's easy because. The student, the facility, the instruction, the everything. Is no, no difficult for me because if you not understand, I.
So sometimes when folks don't understand me, I use body language. So they can understand me because I have to go to those schools and see firsthand what's going on in those schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of quick things that I, I'd like to ask tonight and yes, I have many, many more. Um and yes, thank you, um Ms. Polanco Garcia for talking about the time and taking advantage. Of the time that the superintendent, Megan and myself make available and the other teams so that committee members can get more information. Prior to the meeting. So thank you for being very faithful to your meetings. Um. I know we talked, the initial issue was that we, there's a net sum. Change of about fifty-two classrooms that have been completely taken offline. Um have you done the math that says, e- even with that, if we were to really fully. Um enrolled classrooms, you know, that are now partially enrolled across this district. Leaving room for potential kids in moving from, you know, substantially separate, et cetera. How many more classrooms at various grade levels or are there particular grades or? You know, ages of kids that if you had to bite the bullet and take away the soft landings and all of the other supports. What truly, what we look like?
Yeah, so it's a, that is a brilliant question. Um. I think that Jamie can probably um answer it more fully. I will say from my perspective, a couple of things. I think one, we were, we identified far more classrooms that could potentially be consolidated. But we had a very deliberate conversation with the principal and looked at enrollment trend. Because what we didn't wanna do was close a classroom this year to open a classroom next year. That's called an anti-bubble. Like we, we don't wanna do that. So um at, you know, as a result, we backed off of the number. We could have been more, more aggressive. But again, to what end? Um so that's one area. I think one area that schools are struggling in the K eight area. Is the seventh and eighth grades. I think the K eights are finding themselves, and not all. But uh but, but many are finding themselves in a situation where between exam school testing and PLO. And uh the alignment of seven, twelve high schools and students and parents wanting one transition. It ends up shrinking to a very small number, that seventh and eighth grade. And in order to give the students math, science, social studies and English and elective. They have to keep more staff than actually what's required for those sections. So then that compromises other people within the school. That is like an area we've identified, we know it's an issue. And I think frankly, um there are school leaders that are saying like, this is why we wanna talk about what that pre-K to six alignment could look like in our school. Right? For that reason. Again, it's not all of them, but it is enough of them that it is a pattern. Um Jamie, do you have, uh, I, I don't know an easy way to answer the Chair's question. Cause it is complex, but what's your initial thinking on? And then we can also get back to her.
Yeah, I, I like the way you answered by bringing up that specific example of how there are um. Some more individual classroom changes we can look at, but they um. They require trade-offs, right? Different, they, they have different impacts on individual schools. So I think the middle school is also a great example of that is, that is a category that's an area where we can provide more of an answer. We can think about. What, how that could look different. I think beyond that, it's gonna be more of a um. Conversation about trade-offs and it's gonna be part of the conversation in partnership with the Green New Deal team. That um to make different consolidation decisions, you have to look beyond individual schools. And again, that will require um different trade-offs, so it can go in a lot of different directions. So it will be hard to give you a number without saying, well. If we prioritize this and we go down this path, there might be this sort of opportunity.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that we've got these, these transition issues that. One year will be one where and then a couple of years from now will be different, but it was just, just interested as we're thinking about this. How do we, you know, how do we account for that? Um I've got two more questions. Um I'll state them if we, and I'm not gonna ask to have them both answered tonight. But one is was in reference to what um Dr. Chen said in the beginning. I need somebody to help me to understand. What you mean by the realignment of resources. When we're saying that we're asking schools to do a realignment, can we, you know, maybe that's not for tonight. But I would really like to understand what that means. And then my other question is about the work that we're doing in inclusion and what the inclusion working groups. Have been doing and what their out, their requests were based on. And my question was. Were those requests only relating to the grades that are gonna be impacted in this first year? Or were those school-wide or, you know, program-wide requests to understand? You know, what they got or didn't get and what was, what it really is impacting.
So Chair, we'll, we'll give you some concrete examples when we go through the school budget of what the shifting of resources looks like.
Okay.
Um I think in terms of the uh, the second IPT question, we were asking to address. The grades according to the schedule, according to the schedule of grade configuration. I think what happens though for some schools is they may already be partially into inclusion. Or fully into inclusion and then it becomes very hard to go backward and say, well, I'm only doing these grades. So I think the IPTs kind of varied and I think that's. When we say schools were at very different entry points, they were in very different entry points. And that's where the team. Had to kind of work across with the IPT team to figure out what made sense.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And, and, and in my last comment to us that I know that. The grades, there are, there are many grades that are being impacted in this period, but particularly the K zero, K one and K two.
Yes.
And as an early childhood person and as a, a, you know, critical part of the opportunity and achievement gap task force. We know the only place we have the potential of stopping gaps from being formed. Or nipping them quickly is when children are young.
That's right.
And so, you know, I'm hoping as we do this work, that we look very intentionally. At what the resources are that are gonna help us maybe to provide some strong supports to kids younger. So that they won't need them later because if we don't, we pay that price for the length of the time kids are in our system. So I'm hoping we're looking very carefully at what we're doing for all children. Um you know, no matter if they have an IEP or DLL or not, but for really what are we doing for our youngest kids? To try to figure out, could we potentially just prevent the gap from developing in the first place?
Best way not to have a gap.
Exactly, so, yeah. Alrighty. So again, I wanna thank everyone for all of their questions and to remind us that tonight marks the beginning. Of a dynamic two-month budget process. Um we have a series of virtual budget hearings scheduled over the next several weeks. Starting on Thursday, February fifteenth at five P M. The focus of that hearing will be school budgets. So again, to all members, all of your school budget questions, get them in as quickly as you can. Um. And you can review all of the budget documents online at bud- bostonpublicschools.org/budget. And when you click on the fiscal year twenty-five budget development, there is a form. Where you can share feedback and submit questions. Of course, you can email the committee by visiting the committee's webpage, bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee. Remember, your input is critical as we consider the superintendent's budget recommendation for the next fiscal year. And the committee will be voting on the superintendent's final fiscal year twenty-five budget recommendation on March twenty-seven. We will now return to public comment. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. Um we have two speakers and we'll continue with public testimony.
Thank you.
Please make sure you're signed into Zoom with the same name that you used to sign up for public comment. And be prepared to unmute yourself and turn on your camera when it's your turn to testify. Please raise your hand virtually when I call your name. Alta Gracia Victoria and Shamir Michael. Okay, um Victoria's not in the meeting, so let's try Shamir Michael.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
We can hear. Are you able to turn on your camera for us?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good. Hi everyone, my name is Show Mike, Show Mike, I'm a resident of Rosendale. I'm a former student and educator at the Gardner Pilot Academy. My brothers and I were students while both Dr. Montez and Ms. Herman have been principals. And the difference is evident. It's easy in a district this large to lose track of all the inner workings of its schools. And it's even easier to look at snapshots of success and awards and just believe that everything on ground level is great. As a black educator at the Gardner, my voice was never valued. My skill set and value was always diminished to behavior support. Behaviors that in fact were allowed to continue and worsen under the lack of follow-through and leadership from both Erica and Joe. In times of crisis, neither Joe or Erica could be reached for support. The administration prided itself on being an anti-racist institution, but constantly allowed its students of color to follow victim. To constant racism and essentially suffer in silence. Lead and student leadership showed me that. Students in eighth grade who have been there since K two have been taught that they don't have agency to combat racism. And that the adults who should be protecting them from racist um ideologies and. Attacks are powerless to do so. I have had students ask why they should care about the Gardner. Or care about being a stu- a student leader at the Gardner, when so many of their peers are allowed to constantly antagonize them. I quit the Gardner September of twenty twenty-three and what made that decision hard was my history with the school, my connection and care for the students. Um and the dedication that I saw the middle school teaching staff have to the success of the students.
Twenty seconds.
It's heartbreaking and unfortunate that it took the situation to bring light to all that has plagued that building, but I am hopeful that. It will bring about the change needed to make the Gardner deserving of all the awards it has received. You can like Erica and Joe as people and admit that they aren't great school leaders. Erica is a bully and.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your, at your two minutes. Thank you. Um Alta Gracia, Victoria is in the meeting. Um please raise your hand.
Good evening.
Buenas noches.
Good evening, everyone.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Alta Gracia Victorino. Soy mamá de dos niños que estudiante de la Gardner.
My name is Alta Gracia Victorino. I'm a mother of two kids that go to the Gardner School.
Con respeto al señor, Mr. Sarah, so yo me quiero referir como, sobre él, por una persona muy responsable.
So I'd like to make reference to Mr. Sarah in the first place. I would like to refer to him as a very responsible person.
Muy respetuosa.
A very respectful person.
Con mucha disponibilidad y mucho amor para darle a los niños, con mucha capacidad de ayudar a todos los niños. Todos los niños lo adoran.
All the kids adore him. He's always available. He displays a lot of love for the students. He has the capacity of helping every student.
Siempre se ha preocupado por el bienestar de cada estudiante, sin excepción de persona.
He has always been concerned about the well-being of every single student without any discrimination of anybody.
Y me parece que es injusto lo que está pasando con él ahora.
I do believe that is very unjust what is happening at the present time with him.
Siento que los niños van a perder confianza en sí mismo. Si, si, si los niños no tienen interacción, interactúan con él, no comparten con él. No, no, si no pueden comunicarse con él. Siento que es una necesidad muy grande que él tenga, que él tenga, que él siga bajo su responsabilidad como. Como el, con el rol que él ha hecho hasta ahora, lo ha hecho perfectamente.
It is very important that he continues executing his role. He has done that perfectly in the past. I do believe as well. That this was contribute, that is going to contribute to the lack of confidence to kids um having themselves. The lack of interaction with him, the lack of communication with Mr. Herman, the lack of sharing the experiences with him will be. A deterrent of the trust.
Eso es todo lo que quería decir, muchas gracias.
That's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much and good night to everybody.
Thank you.
Muchas gracias, senor.
Thank you. Chair Robinson, that concludes our speakers' republic comment.
Thank you. Is there any new business? Okay, that concludes our business for this evening. As a reminder, the school committee is holding virtual meetings on Zoom from January through March. The next regular scheduled committee meeting will take place on Wednesday, February twenty-eighth at five P M. Is there a budget hearing next week on the fifteenth?
Fifteenth, oh, correct.
Yes. Okay, that, that wasn't in my notes, but I just wanna remind us that we are meeting next Thursday at five P M on a budget hearing on schools. Um, if there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. As there any discussion, objection to the motion? Hearing now, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins, Mr. Credit Hernandez, Ms. Lima Barbosa.
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia.
Yes.
But not. Mr. Tran, Mr. O'Neil.
Yes.
His Robinson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all and have a good night.
Night, everyone, thank you.
Night.